Royo.
Present.
Counselor Baker.
Yep.
Counselor Bach.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Savi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor Mejia.
Present.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu.
Present.
Madam President, we have forum. Thank you all present.
I've been informed by the clerk that a forum is present and I will invite Counselor Braden up, who will introduce our clergy. Counselor Braden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my great pleasure today to introduce Sister Patricia Andrews, who is Sister of St. Joseph, Boston. Sister Pat grew up in Brockton and entered the congregation of the Sisters of St. Joseph in 1964. She's had a very long career in the field of education at various levels over 56 years. She started her teaching career in the inner-city Cathedral High School in the South End and at Our Lady of Lurds in Jamaica Plain. Then she had 17 years as principal of Our Lady of Lurds and later at the Gate of Heaven in South Boston. Apparently, she knows your mother, Michael Flaherty. In 1994, she came to Brighton having been elected to the leadership team of the Sisters of St. Joseph and held that role for six years. And she's also served on the Board of Trustees of many schools. In 2000, Sister Pat was appointed Director of the Literacy Connection, and that's how I came to know her in the neighborhood. It's an adult literacy program that has been going for 33 years, and it responds to the needs of non-English-speaking adults, facilitating language skills which help them to enhance the quality of their life, of the students themselves and for their families, and increase their economic capacity. And in 2005, in response to the need raised by the Austin-Brighton community, Sister Pat was instrumental in starting a citizenship program that has helped over 160 people become citizens of the United States. Thanks to the Literacy Connection, Sister Pat has been actively involved in the Austin-Brighton community for these past 20 years and has greatly formed many, many friendships and partnerships in the neighborhood. And I'm extremely pleased to be able to introduce you today to do our indication. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden, and I too express my grateful thanks for this honor to join all of you in prayer. The COVID-19 pandemic has rapidly transformed life as we know it for millions of people throughout the world, and there's a great deal of uncertainty around us. And so, to our God of many names, but always a God of inclusive love, we pray. Loving God, we hold in tenderness and prayer the collective suffering of our world at this time, and we grieve precious lives lost and vulnerable lives threatened. We are a country pledged to pursue liberty and justice for all, but we are often too divided across lines of race, ethnicity, and economic inequality. We are a nation of immigrants struggling to address the challenges of many of our new immigrants in our midst. We are an affluent society where many live in poverty. They lack health care and the necessities of life. We are part of a larger global community facing urgent threats to our environment that must sustain us all. These challenges are at the heart of public life and at the center of the pursuit of happiness and the common good. God of enduring love, may our personal fates give us the strength to witness with courage to the challenges before us. May we, as elected civic leaders and involved citizens and neighbors, may we be united in building our city of Boston. Let us work, loving God, toward a vision of your world as your love would have it. A world where the weak are protected and none go hungry. A world where the riches of creation are shared and everyone can use them. A world where different races and cultures live in harmony and mutual respect. A world where peace is built with justice, and justice is guided by love. Ingive us, please, loving God, the inspiration and the courage to build it. Today, God of unifying love, we ask that you would bless and give our city leaders, especially our council, state, and national leaders, give us wisdom, discernment, strength, and resolve. Keep them healthy and safe, and above all, with I heard your 11 pages of news today, rested, so that you can continue to guide us through these troubling times. And to this we say amen.
Amen.
And I say thank you.
Thank you so much, Sister Pat. I hope you will join us as we pledge allegiance to the flag. You're welcome to stay for any part of the meeting, but don't feel that you're not doing. We'll be alone. We will pledge allegiance to the flag.
I agree. Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States and America.
And to the republic.
Of all which stands.
On one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Sister Pat. Feel free to join us. I just wanted to kind of ground us. It's been a couple of weeks since we last met, and since our last meeting two weeks ago, we lost civil rights legends, the Reverend C.T. Vivian and Congressman John Lewis. Reverend Vivian first began organizing sit-ins in the 1940s. He would later join Reverend Martin Luther King and would help organize Freedom Rides of the 1960s. A young John Lewis would also join Dr. King and the movement before his service in the House of Representatives. Luke was a Freedom Rider. He was the chairman of SNCC, was the last surviving and youngest speaker at the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom, and he survived the brutal beating from state troopers for leading a march across the Edmund Pettus Bridge on what is now known as Bloody Sunday. It is fitting that we open up our meeting today, grounding ourselves and reflecting on their work. It's a reminder for us that the protests in the community must be met with policy from the council. And I just want to share an excerpt from one of the speeches from Congressman Lewis for us to reflect on as we start our work today. And he says, I quote, "We're not going back. We made too much progress and we're going forward. There may be some setbacks, some delays, some disappointment, but you must never, ever give up or give in. You must keep the faith and keep your eyes on the prize. That is your calling. That is your mission. That is your moral obligation. That is your mandate. Get out there and do it. Get in the way. Be bold. Be courageous. Stand up. Speak up. Speak out. And find a way to create the beloved community." End quote. So with that, let's move on with our agenda, and as Congressman Lewis would say, "Let's get into some good trouble and necessary trouble." So we will move on with our agenda with the First Order of Business, and that is the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand as approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. And we will now move on to communications from His Honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, if you could, please read docket 0857.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0857, excuse me. Message and order approving an appropriation of $7,50,607 for the purpose of paying for the costs associated with the roof and boiler replacement projects at the following schools: Mary Lion School, McKinley School, and Curly K-8, for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. Docket 0857 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Let's go on to docket 0858.
Docket 0858, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $3,828,317 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Public Safety Answering Points Support and Incentive Grant, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department, will fund costs associated with providing enhanced 911 services.
Docket 0858 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0859?
Thank you. Docket 0859, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $295,000 in the form of a 2020 Transportation Construction Grant, awarded by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, be administered by the Boston Transportation Department. The purpose of this grant is to fund the Cambridge Street and Maffa Way portions of the Lost Village project in Carstown neighborhood.
Thank you so much. Docket 0859 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. And we'll now move on to docket 0860.
Docket 0860, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $200,000 in the form of a transportation planning grant awarded by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, to be administered by the Boston Transportation Department. The purpose of this grant is to fund a portion of the design costs under the Tetra Tech Contract for the Sullivan Square/Rutherford Avenue Project.
Thank you. Docket 0860, referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We'll move on to docket 0861.
Docket 0861, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $120,000 in the form of a grant, Boston Resiliency Fund Grant, awarded by the Boston Resiliency Fund, to be administered by the Youth Engagement and Employment. The grant will fund the purchase of Chromebooks for the Summer Jobs Program.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a grant for $120,000 to support the purchase of Chromebooks for the young people who are involved in our Summer Jobs Program. It's a really important program. It's ongoing at this moment, and I respectfully ask to suspend the rules and vote to pass and accept this grant immediately. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0861. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0861 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0862?
Docket 0862, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $50,000 in the form of a grant for the Small Business Relief Grant, awarded by the Massachusetts Attorney General, to be administered by the Office of Economic Development. The grant will fund emergency grants for small businesses in Boston.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As the Chair of the Committee on Small Businesses, Consumer Affairs, and Workforce Development, we have been very intentional about activating small businesses during COVID-19. We have created voucher programs so that people can shop at local bodegas for culturally competent food, elder projects, food access for elders through supporting small businesses, and then in addition to helping to provide training and technical assistance for barbers and hair salons across the city. So we understand how important supporting this grant is, and we're excited to see that this grant was awarded to the city of Boston and hope to see it go towards empowering small businesses in all neighborhoods. And I ask that we suspend the rules and accept this grant.
Wonderful. Thank you. Counselor Mejia seeks suspension of rules and passage of docket 0862. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0862 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0863?
Certainly. Docket 0863, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $50,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 Senator Charles E. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative Grant, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, and reintegration programs. The program was awarded an additional $50,000.
Thank you. Docket 0863 will be referred to the Committee on Public.
Madam President?
Yes?
I was actually seeking to suspend and pass for this one, based on previous hearing.
So the chair recognizes Counselor Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is actually an extension of a grant, which was previously in the committee, docket 0192, and we held a hearing on this on June 4th, an extensive hearing. This has to do with the Shannon Grant, which was run by Demond, who was in the Grants Division at the Police Department. This was additional funding that was added to the original amount to allow for reimbursement to organizations that are already doing work on behalf of the city with respect to gang intervention and anti-violence work. So looking for a suspension and passage to add this money to the monies that were already previously passed through the council and to get out to these community-based organizations who are seeking, of course, resources as soon as possible. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0863. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, and docket 0863 has been passed. We'll move on to docket 0864. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0864, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $20,000 in the form of a grant for the Down Dudley Event Series, awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, to be administered by the Office of Economic Development. The grant will fund art-related programming in the Dudley Square neighborhood.
And I believe there is a counselor who wants to seek suspension of the rules? In passage of the docket, yes?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, you?
Is that me, Counsel President, Madam President?
Yes, it should be you, Counselor Baker.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to seek suspension and passage of, not suspension and passage, but suspend and accept this grant, please.
Wonderful. So Counselor Baker, who is Chair of the Committee of Arts, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0864. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0864 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0865?
Docket 0865, message and order authorizing, for the benefit of the city of Boston, a donation from Dell of Four Inspiron 173000 Series laptop computers that were recovered in fraud investigation. The recovered computers will be donated to the Police Department to support the department's technological needs.
Thank you. Docket 0865 will be referred to the Committee.
Madam President?
Would you like to suspend?
Yes. I don't know if we didn't get those notes. I apologize. So this docket is looking to, seeking suspension of the rules and passage. Obviously, these laptops were donated to the city of Boston, specifically to the Police Department, but they're going to be used or provided to employees who are currently working from home because of the pandemic. But the department didn't have enough laptops, and so there are some who are using personal laptops, but obviously can't access certain systems because of security and safety reasons. So these four will go to employees who currently do not have access to a work computer. And so I'm seeking suspension of the rules and passage to get those to them immediately. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0865. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and docket 0865 has been passed. We'll move on to docket 0866. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0866, message and order for the confirmation, the appointment of Myra Negron Roach to the Board of Directors of the Boston Industrial Development Finance Authority for term expiring April 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Docket 0866 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We'll move on to docket 0867.
Docket 0867, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of W.E. David Halbert to the Board of Directors of the Boston Industrial Development Finance Authority for term expiring April 1st, 2025.
Thank you. Docket 0867 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Now we will move on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0868 through 0884? We'll read those together.
Thank you. Docket 0868, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Residency Compliance Commission regarding semi-annual report, January through June 2020. Docket number 0869, communication was received from Gregory Rooney, Acting Commissioner of the Boston Transportation Department, on the report of Small Vehicle Sharing Business Advisory Committee. Docket number 0870, notices received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its June 17th, 2020 meeting. Docket number 0871, notices received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its June 24th, 2020 meeting. Docket number 0872, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Alejandro Sanz Yin as a member of the Boston Cannabis Board for term expiring March 4th, 2022. Docket number 0873, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Christopher Arena as a member of the Animal Control for a term expiring January 3rd, 2022. Docket number 0874, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Ayesha Francis, a member of the Boston Employment Commission, for term expiring July 1st, 2022. Docket number 0875, notices received from the mayor of the reappointment of Whitney as a member of the Boston Groundwater Trust for term expiring March 1st, 2022. Docket number 0876, notices received from the mayor of the reappointment of Cheryl Cronin as a member of the Boston Public Library Board of Trustees for term expiring May 1st, 2025. Docket number 0877, notices received from the mayor of the reappointment of Dusia Layubov Skalye as a member of the Commission on Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for term expiring June 1st, 2023. Docket number 0878, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Gary Boyd as a member of the Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for term expiring June 1st, 2023. Docket number 0879, notices received from the mayor of the reappointment of John Barrows as a member of the trustees in charitable donation for inhabitants of Boston for a term expiring May 1st, 2023. Docket number 0880, notices received from the mayor of the reappointment of Joyce Linehan as a member of the trustees of charitable donations for inhabitants of Boston for term expiring May 1st, 2023. Docket number 0881, notices received from the mayor of the reappointment of Jerome Smith as a member of the trustee of charitable donations for inhabitants of Boston for a term expiring May 1st, 2023. Docket number 0882, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Ayesha Miller as a member of the trustees charitable donations for inhabitants of Boston for a term expiring May 1st, 2023. And then, I have gave out of place. Excuse me. Docket number 0883, notices received from the mayor of the reappointment of Drew Smith as trustee of the Franklin Park Maintenance Trust Fund for a term expiring January 14th, 2022. And docket number 0884, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Carolyn Crockett as chief of equity effective June 29th, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0868 through 0884 will be placed on file. Now we will move on to reports of committees. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0233?
Absolutely. Docket number 0233, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on January 29th, 2020. Docket number 0233, petition for a special law regarding an act relative to the zoning board of appeal. It's a missed report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Edwards, who is Chair of the Committee on Government Operations and is the lead sponsor of this docket. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, confirming I'm okay on sound? Yes. Very well. My colleagues, I wanted to first thank you, to the many of you who showed up at several conversations about the zoning board of appeals, especially for those district city councilors. Many of us are dealing with a lot of the, I guess, fallout of this institution's not being updated and not being kept up to modern standards and modern practices since it was essentially established in the 1960s. With that, we initially introduced, my office initially introduced, a home rule petition in 2019. To the mayor and administration's complete and total credit, they got on it right away, got outside counsel and a consultant, and did an extensive report comparing my home rule petition and also looking at other ways in which to modernize the zoning board of appeals. We reintroduced that home rule petition in January, as stated by our clerk, and after that introduction, the mayor's office had an executive order. They introduced the executive order, and a lot of the things suggested in the home rule petition was immediately became law or at least ordered by the mayor to complete. Thereafter, we did have a hearing for those things that had not been formally addressed and where we did have some disagreement. Major areas were about the, how the ZBA should look, standards for variance, and also term limits, and also we were looking at, finally, conflicts of interest. We went, after the hearing, which Chief Jerome Smith, Chief, or Commissioner Dionne Irish, and John Towell attended, a senior advisor, we had a working session. Well, we had the pandemic, and as a result, the conversation was somewhat delayed. We came back to have a working session with many of my colleagues. Again, thank you all for coming, most recently, on July 16th. During that working session, we worked out the final areas of contention and walked away with, I think, an agreement towards a very good bill that I will present shortly. I just want to again acknowledge who was at that working session from the administration. Again, Commissioner Irish, Chief of Staff to Commissioner Irish, Christopher English, Edward Coburn, General Counsel of ISD. Edward Coburn, General Counsel of ISD, and again, John Towel attended. Since that time, and going back and forth with the administration, we have, I believe, come up with a consensus bill that balances the need for a modernization along with the executive order and brings us, I think, into the twentieth century and moves this body and this entity towards transparency, towards eliminating conflicts of interest, towards adding real perspectives from on the ground, and essentially, I think, is the best compromise that we can come up with in a way that pushes us towards a more equitable, transparent, fair process. I sent to my colleagues a comparison of the original ordinance with the currently filed revised form. I will go through it very briefly. The original ordinance had the board member composition to be much larger with perspectives on civil rights, fair housing, environmental protection, urban planning, a homeowner, a renter, and a zoning expert. After much back and forth, we have settled on adding two additional seats, eliminating none of the seats, but allowing for an environmental protection and climate change member who would be proposed by the CLF Conservation Law Foundation, and also adding urban planning, an urban planning member who would be proposed by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. While we did not get additional seats, we did get a commitment from the administration, and it's reflected in the new draft, that the mayor's community selections will include a homeowner and a renter. So we're very excited about that. In terms of electronic filing records and notice, we removed all the duplicative language as a lot of the executive order took care of that. People can now or will eventually be able to file their applications online. People will be able to follow the project online, sign up for listserv so they're given notices immediately if there's a deferral. All of those things have been taken care of in the in the executive order. What is changed is that essentially we will be, the the board votes will be filed electronically within ten business days of the hearing, which is very important, and that is in the statute, and a full report of the hearing will be made available electronically within sixty days. We also, in the statute, the new draft, will be getting quarterly reports, which is a huge information and transparency issue on all the variances that are given out per neighborhood. A lot of people need to see what's going on, and this is a huge win for us in terms of transparency. We'll also understand, not only will understand who voted for what. In terms of financial disclosure and conflicts of interest, much of that, again, was taken care of in the executive order. What I will say that this new draft does is the board member ownership interest will look back from two to five years in terms of what they've owned and their financial interests, and we also added and agreed on a term of term limits for the ZBA members to two terms, two three-year terms, that's six years. In order to prevent a mass exodus of the current board members, there will be one term grace period. And then after, and then for those new new members coming on, they will be committed to the six years. We thought that was a balance of interests, and it didn't allow for all the institutional memory and knowledge to be wiped away. In terms of the standards of the variance, after the working session, we learned that the standards for the variances are already in our zoning code, and we can directly impact them. Honestly, for many of us, putting that up for the State House to manipulate or deal with without us didn't make much sense, and I'm very happy and want to thank Christopher English for noting that. And in terms of supports, accessibility, trainings, which we also require, again, the executive order is going to have everyone trained on a regular basis in ethics and also zoning law. One thing that the the new draft does is make sure that there will be someone dedicated from ISD available at all hearings that will be clearly identifiable to provide public guidance in the process. It's neutral public guidance, and we will make sure that that person either has is multilingual or has access to language accessibility, which is also something we fought for and is reflected in the executive order, and it clarifies, MEPDA is responsible for updating the ZBA on changes to city ordinances and zoning so that they are not granting variances under standards that are no longer applicable. This was a lot of work. I want to say that we, and I have to say, it's a good amount of work, and thank you so much to my colleagues for your feedback, making sure that people understood, literally down to the languages. Counselor Flynn, thank you for the transparency suggestions. Counselor Braden, thank you very much. Counselor Bach, for your suggestions concerning the way to get this done, but also have change. I want to thank you, Counselor Mahia, for pushing again, not only for accessibility, but true transparency. I want to thank Counselor Flaherty for his continued knowledge and understanding of the process. Counselor Sabi George, you were also impactful in your thoughts, particularly not only about the process, but in terms of the transparency and balancing interests. I'm sorry I didn't get all the notes, but I do know the Counselor Malley, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Wu, Counselor Royo. Actually, all the counselors were available at some point in this conversation because all of us have been on the other end of the conversation, including yourself, Counsel President. So my ask to my colleagues is to please accept the committee report and please pass this home rule petition. It may seem late in the game, and that's what a lot of people have asked, well, why do this now if it's going to go to the State House and if their session ends? It doesn't end until it ends, and that's what I've been told, and they they can't pass anything if they don't have it. So this has been, we've worked back and forth with the mayor. He is committed to this, and I think I hope that you will also be as well. Thank you very much, Madam President, for the time. I now turn over to my colleagues.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Blue. Counselor Blue, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you to our lead sponsor and champion for this over many, many months. I just wanted to weigh in and add to my gratitude that I'm in full support and excited to be voting in support of this structural change to the ZBA through a home rule petition. I did want to just put a little context around how I've been thinking about this piece of it relative to other pieces. I think there are a couple relevant considerations when it comes to the ZBA that the council should be weighing in different time scales. One is the day-to-day, understanding that we are at just quorum now in terms of ZBA members and that there are several nominations in the Planning, Development, and Transportation Committee. I am looking to give an update on that at the end of the meeting in the announcement section, so I'll save most of what I have to say for then. I have had communications with the administration. I've sent a letter over to the mayor requesting information, and anyway, more on that later. Secondly, but related to that, is looking back in terms of the ZBA and the issues of trust, the issues of federal bribery case that have been linked to former, potentially former members of the ZBA and the institution, and so what action the City Council must take to restore that trust. I believe it is very closely linked to the structural changes that we are talking about with this particular home rule petition. And finally, kind of zooming out to that big structural change, I just want to weigh in on the record that my support for this is very closely linked to my continued push to reform the entire development system, that as long as we have the majority of construction and development cases going through the ZBA in an appeals process that should really be reserved for a very small number of exceptions to the rules, we will not have a fair, equitable system. So we certainly need these structural changes, but we also need to go even deeper and continue to push for zoning that is updated through citywide planning, or reforms, planning and development process, including a new agency under city control that will will then make these changes, the appointments, the reporting, meaningful in that context. So thank you again so much to our lead sponsor for her work and looking forward to voting yes.
Thank you so much. Anyone else looking to speak? Counselor, so we'll move on then. Counselor Edwards seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage in a new draft of docket zero two three three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket zero two three three has been passed in a new draft. All righty, wonderful. Now we will move on to matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket zero three eight nine?
Docket zero three eight nine, order for hearing regarding condominium conversion protections in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards, who is Chair on the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much, Madam President. I will be very brief as we are going to keep this ultimately in committee, but I did want to note to folks that we are working extremely hard at making sure one of the most effective statutes that we have is updated and reflects the real needs of the Bostonians today. I want to thank so much to my colleagues who showed up at the last latest working session to make sure that we were talking about updates that will help make sure that people are able to stay in their homes, and if they're not able to stay there, that they are given their the benefits and the rights that they deserve. One of the biggest issues we discussed was the the clearout of a building, which often happens, and then a person purchased it saying there's no one there to give rights to or to give relocation benefits to or to even give the extended leases to. So we're working on that and considering a potential new permit for condo conversions to make sure that there's certain notices and provisions given there. We also discussed language access. Again, thank you to Counselor Splin and Counselor Mahia for making sure people really actually know their rights. We discussed updating the benefits, currently at ten thousand dollars for seniors, low-income individuals, and people with disabilities, and six thousand dollars for everyone else. And we also essentially discussed how we are going to implement this and making sure it's real with the current definitions of the State House essentially limiting this law to four units or above and only, and which is eleven percent of the condo conversions that are actually happening. Majority happen in triple deckers with Dorchester being number one, East Boston number two. Eighty-nine percent of condo conversions happen in triple deckers and down. So we are trying to make it real for a very small amount of people, but also trying to figure out what to do. Perfect question asked by Counselor Braden, I just want to give credit, was what if they're going from a triple decker up to a five or six condo unit building? And that was a wonderfully perplexed thing that stumped all the lawyers. We don't have an answer, but we are going to keep it in committee to get those answers and make sure we update the condo conversion ordinance. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Is anyone looking to speak? Counselor Blue, I see that your blue hand is raised. I'm not sure if that's from the last round. You're good, right?
That's just leftover, sorry.
Wonderful. Docket zero eight zero three eight nine will remain in the Committee of Housing and Community Development. Thank you for that report, Counselor Edwards. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to docket zero eight three nine. So this is a number for those who like to deal with that. We just had docket zero eight, now it's zero eight three.
It's a trick question. Docket zero eight three nine, order for hearing regarding Boston Police Overtime.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach, the Chair of Ways and Means. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Yesterday, we held a hearing on the Boston Police Department's overtime budget and specifically how to make real the cuts that were included in the FY twenty one budget of twelve million dollars. We heard from several members of the Boston Police Department's command staff and also the Budget Director for the City of Boston, Justin Starrett. We we learned in the hearing that the actual overtime budget used last year swelled to seventy-two and a half million dollars from the sixty million budgeted, which means that the cut to make a forty-eight million dollar overtime budget real is actually more of a twenty-four and a half million dollar cut rather than a twelve million dollar one, and which is about a third of what the department spent last year. And I think certainly what I felt as Chair was that the department did not come to us with a concrete plan that was implementable and involved new controls and and frankly structural changes that would get us to that number. So we we received lots of questions from counselors and from advocates who wrote in that we don't have answers to yet, so we'll be following up on that. But I think it's more than just a kind of traditional post-hearing information request. It's more that we really didn't, we didn't get the kind of actionable plan that the council can monitor going forward that we need to have for these cuts to become real. And I think as we as we continue in a year of pandemic where we need our fiscal, like, health for the city to be as well-guarded as possible, and also a year in which people have been crying out for change in the police department, that what we we need a real plan. We need a plan that's actually going to save the money and that's going to change the way that we police the city to the better. So we'll be following up with a with, as I said, that further information requests. We were already planning on following up with quarterly hearings to kind of track where we are on the overtime budget, but I think in the immediate term, we're going to need further strenuous follow-up to to push the department and administration and finance to present a serious plan for achieving that twenty-four and a half million dollars of savings. So my recommendation, Madam President, is that the matter remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket zero eight three nine will remain in the Committee of Ways and Means, and we will move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, could we start with docket zero eight eight five?
Docket zero eight eight five, Counselors Campbell and Arroyo offer the following ordinance, establishing a civilian review board within the city of Boston.
Oh, thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend Rule twelve and add Counselor Mahia.
Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Mahia is added as an original cosponsor.
Thank you, and thank you to Counselors Arroyo and Mahia for the partnership, and also thank you to some of my council colleagues who have already reached out in looking to work in partnership on this very important legislation. And, you know, the role of the civilian review board is, or I should say, the role. The civilian review board conversation is one that obviously is happening nationally right now with respect to the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and so many others. But this has been a conversation in the city of Boston for some time, and so I quickly want to thank, of course, Jamal Crawford, who's, he has many issues, but this is one of his issues. I want to thank him for his continued partnership and voice on this and input. I also want to thank my predecessor, Counselor Yancey. This was also one of his topics of discussion, along with body cameras and so many other issues that were important to the folks within District Four, and along with many other advocates who we've been in contact with and remain in contact with as we review this draft ordinance to get to a final a final ordinance. And, you know, the purpose of this ordinance is to couple this with many other, many other police reforms that we're pushing right now, and the goal is to provide greater accountability and transparency for the police department. The murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and others are obviously the worst and most devastating reasons for accountability, but we know that everyday people, regardless of their race, have very uncomfortable and sometimes dangerous encounters with police. And just to give you a few statistics, nationally, there is much data out there that says police generally are twice as likely to use force against people of color. Black men are about two and a half times more likely to be killed by police than white men. And right here in Boston, based on the FIO data that was recently subpoenaed, frankly, by this council from the police department, just last year, seventy percent of the police stops stop and frisk involve black residents, even though they're only a quarter of the population of the city of Boston, and that racial disparity has only gotten worse over the last few years. And so we know Boston is not immune or exempt from incidents of excessive force, misconduct, or racism. This ordinance is as a result of extensive and in-depth research looking at civilian review boards across the country and various municipalities that currently have such boards, and this includes New York, Oakland, Newark, Atlanta, and so many others. And the ordinance pushes to create a civilian review board that will replace the current co-op, which is known as the Community Alms Spudsmann Oversight Panel, with the following powers and responsibilities. The board would have the ability to receive and investigate complaints against police officers, both from residents and from other officers or police department personnel. The board would have the power in certain instances to review Boston Police Department's internal affairs investigations, to recommend disciplinary actions, to recommend changes to policy and procedure, to collect and publish data on a monthly basis on complaints and action taken to resolve cases, as well as police stops, arrests, use of force, and other demographics of the department, to hold monthly meetings and publish semi-annual reports with data and recommendations. The board will also have an office attached with resources and human capital and be truly independent from the police department. One thing I would One thing that was critically important to every board that was deemed to be successful across the country was that it was resourced. It had financial resources and adequate human capital to be able to conduct their business. This board will be more effective than the current Co-op panel. It will be independent from the police department with appointments by both the council and the mayor. It will have broader authority to investigate complaints of policeman misconduct, including subpoena power and the power to issue disciplinary recommendations. It will make it easier for folks to file complaints, not only easily accessible, whether in person or online, but also ensuring that it's done in various languages. Office will be resourced and, of course, staffed, and the goal by including a lot with respect to reporting requirements is to create greater transparency, which doesn't often exist currently. I also quickly want to, of course, acknowledge the Mayor's Racial Equity Task Force, which is also charged with looking into this particular matter. But obviously, that came about after the council had already begun its discussions with respect to this civilian review board as well as this ordinance. So of course, I look forward to working in partnership with the task force. I also look forward to working in partnership with other advocates and many of the advocacy organizations have already been in contact, as this is a pressing issue for them. And lastly, I'll say it's been a topic of discussion in the council for some time. Over the course of a few years, I've filed hearing orders with the hopes of actually having more robust conversations before putting forth an ordinance. And all three of those hearing orders were actually ignored. And so this has actually been quite a frustrating process. But why I'm hopeful now and why I'm optimistic is not only because of the new makeup of this council, because of the partnership of my council colleagues, because of the council president, of course, but also because of what we're seeing nationally, what we're seeing locally. Thousands of residents are mobilizing and demanding greater accountability. They're calling us, they're reaching out to us. There is a movement to reform and reimagine our policing system. And so I think this is absolutely the appropriate time to not only create such a board, but to push the envelope as far as we can, given our limitations legally or with respect to the collective bargaining agreement, to create something that has teeth and has the real power to create accountability with respect to our policing department. This ordinance is the strongest that I could have created, given the limitations we have. We are obviously in the midst of our collective bargaining discussions, and I will continue to follow those, and I will keep pushing the administration to push within those discussions greater transparency with respect to the disciplinary process. Right now, it's quite limited, and so I think we can do a lot more there in order to even strengthen this ordinance even further. I look forward to robust conversation, not only with all of my council colleagues and advocates, with the police unions, with officers, and with residents as we move this through the council process. Again, thank you, Madam President. Thank you to Counselors Arroyo and Mejia, and looking forward to further discussion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank Counselor Campbell and Counselor Mejia for their leadership on this as well. I believe Counselor Campbell summarized this well, and so what I'll say is that these are longstanding issues and longstanding concerns of our communities. I believe the last time civilian review board ordinance was before the council. My father was a lead sponsor, to put some time on that. I believe it was in the early 2000s. And so what came from that was a Community Alms Spudsmann Oversight Panel, the Co-op, which at the time was panned for not being strong enough and not having the teeth necessary to do what we're looking to do here, and that has borne out the history of the Co-op and its ineffectiveness in creating effective oversight and accountability, partly due to limited resources, authority, and enforcement powers, as well documented. And as we talk about this is the review board and what we seek to do, I think it's important to put that in the context of our current timeframe where the reality is there's very few jobs that allow people to use force on our residents and on our constituents. And the reality is when you have that kind of responsibility and that kind of power, a certain level of oversight and standards are required. And when we talk about community faith in the process and transparency and accountability, civilian review board goes a long way toward ensuring those things. And so I look forward to doing this work collaboratively with the council. I thank again Counselor Campbell for her leadership on pushing on this issue, and I also thank those in our communities who have pushed for these issues and for this specific solution for decades now. And so I look forward to moving forward united in creating a civilian review board that brings back and establishes accountability and transparency and oversight to BPD.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselors Campbell and Arroyo for allowing us to collaborate and cooperate on this issue. Something that we've always believed in our office is that if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, and every day, we've been getting eaten up alive out here. But more recently, we've been thinking, what does it look like when we create our own tables and when we are the ones who are bringing folks together? And that's what the civilian review board seeks to do. For those who don't know, a civilian review board is a group of people who are not members of the police or government, whose job it is to review complaints of police misconduct. The board will thoroughly investigate these complaints and issues, disciplinary recommendations, which the commissioner will administer. It's an accountability measure, and that accountability lens is something that we pushed for when we're writing the first draft of this ordinance. We make sure that there is a dedicated youth delegate on the board as well as that of lived experiences to be adequate level of expertise when it comes to police misconduct. But for those of you who are listening in, we want you to be really mindful that this ordinance is not in its final form. There's going to be a lengthy discussion process, and we encourage all people, those that agree with us and those who disagree with us, to continue to make your voices heard. I think that it is really, this is the time when we have Counselor, President Council, Janie, one of these days, I'll get it correct, you know, in this position of leadership, really moving the needle when it comes to issues that are impacting black and brown communities. We have a council that reflects the diversity of this city, and now is the time for us to recognize that everyone is looking to us to ensure that we move the needle. This is not the time for status quo. This is not the time to get along, to go along. This is the time for us to really move the conversation forward. And the fact that it took George Floyd and that it took all of these things that have happened in our community for us to be able to even have a task force, right? To have Jamal Crawford, who has been out in these streets, hooting and hollering around these issues for as long as I can remember on my Facebook, right? The fact that this moment in time, we're able to move speaks volumes to the power of the people, but also the lack of urgency that we have been, I would say, subjected to for far too long. And so I am so incredibly grateful to this council for the way that we've been moving in all the spaces and look forward to bringing the people to the conversation to ensure that it's reflected of those. So power to the people, and here we go. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to commend the makers and thank them for putting together this important ordinance and really, as Counselor Campbell said, for making it an ordinance, because I think the time for action is now, and it needs to take form and become real. I also just wanted to add that, you know, the more that I've looked at the police contract that we have in Boston, the more clear it is that on matters of discipline and oversight, we're here in the city and in the state really behind a lot of other places. And I think as I look at this civilian review board, I think about how important it is for us to make sure that a board like this will really have the authority to give the civilians who reach out to it the confidence that the civilian oversight is real and has teeth. And so I just, we're looking forward in the coming months to a hearing on the police contract, and I'm just looking forward to combining these two efforts so that we can really make this a reality. So just want to again commend the makers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If no one else would like to speak, let me just briefly say and commend the makers for this. This is a longstanding issue, as already has been stated. Certainly want to shout out Jamal Crawford, who lives in District 7, for his longtime advocacy on this. And quite frankly, there's a lot of activism in my district around this issue, not just from the council and counselors who have served before us, but from the community. And I'm grateful for that activism in my district, but in part, it comes from my district also being a district that is disproportionately impacted by these issues. So we have to be active on these issues. So thank you for bringing this forth in the form of an ordinance so that we can move into some action. Docket 0885 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to docket 0886. If you could read that, please.
Madam President, some of us may like to sign on.
Oh, thank you so much. My apologies, trying to move us around. So a show of physical hands. Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Please add Counselor Bach. Please add Counselor Asabi George. Please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Wu, Counselor O'Malley, and please also add the Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good save.
0885 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations, and we'll move on to docket 0886.
Docket 0886, Counselors Arroyo and Wu offer the following audit for hearing regarding selection of NWEA as the admissions exam vendor for Boston's exam schools and the impact exam-based admissions has on diverse enrollment at those exam schools.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Mejia as a lead sponsor.
Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Mejia is added.
Thank you, Madam President. And I would say that there was quite a bit of interest from other counselors in this specific hearing, and I believe it's largely due to the fact that so many of us have at some point or another either been a part of BPS or a part of BPS advocacy. This specific hearing is about the exam school structure, the exam school admissions, and the selection of NWEA as the admissions exam. For some context, in 2018, Harvard Kennedy School released a report that found that despite black and Hispanic students making up 75% of Boston's student population, they only make up 40% of enrollment at the three schools that are exam schools and only 20% of enrollment at Boston Latin School. A large factor for that is the exam required for admission. And in February of 2020, the previous admissions exam vendor, Education Records Bureau, that administered the IC exam, shared that they had been sharing these concerns with the district for almost a decade and listed a number of emails in which they made clear that the admissions exam or an admissions test for eligibility contributed significantly to demographic disparities at our exam schools. Fast forwarding to our current day, on June 30th, 2020, the Opportunity and Treatment Gaps Task Force held a meeting at which Superintendent Casilius and members of our staff were present. At that meeting, they were asked whether a new exam vendor had been selected at the time of the meeting, and they answered no. On that, at that same meeting, the task force unanimously voted to suspend the city's exam school admissions test for one year due to the COVID-19 pandemic, citing the disproportionate impact the pandemic had had on black communities, black and Latino communities, and the significant learning disruptions that have occurred during the shift to remote learning. July 2nd of this year, Superintendent Casilius announced that the city had announced a new contract with NWEA. That was two days after the meeting in which they had stated that they had not selected an exam. NWEA is an admissions exam vendor from Portland, Oregon. Later in a statement, the superintendent stated that they had initially intended to announce this in June 17th, but it got pushed back to July 2nd. And so the hearing is partly to understand the thought process and the decision behind NWEA as an admissions exam vendor. It's also to discuss the disparity in the gaps demographically that we have with our exam schools and the ways in which admission exams make that worse, in ways in which we can work to resolve that and perhaps do away with an exam period for admission. As somebody who attended one of our exam schools, the O'Bryants, I'm well aware of the stakes of these exams and the pressure on our children as they come up through BPS to take these exams and to ensure that they receive entry into these schools. And so there's a number of different things there to explore, and I look forward to working together with the council to make sure that we're doing everything in our power, especially in this climate, to ensure that racial equity and racial justice is a part of everything we do, especially when we talk about the ways in which we allow our children, those in our communities specifically who need these advantages. They need these abilities to be in schools that foster learning at the level that our exam schools do. And so this is something I believe is going to be urgent moving into the next year with the way that COVID has really wrecked our school system as we know it and without a real idea for when our school system and the way that we've experienced it in the past will return to that level, never mind the levels in which we require it to. So with that, I look forward to working with Counselor Wu and Counselor Mejia to really dig into the exam school admission process and how we make that a more just process for all.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Wu.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you very much to Counselor Arroyo for inviting me to join and looking forward. Thank you to Counselor Mejia for her partnership as well. All I will add to Counselor Arroyo's very eloquent and comprehensive summary is that we really have to ask ourselves what we're trying to accomplish as we have these structures that have been around for a long time, right? Because we are in a moment where we need to ask that question about all structures as we need to be thinking about rebuilding and recovering for the long run. This is a moment when national standardized testing has been paused and canceled in many cases, where schools at the university level are not requiring these tests because recognizing the danger and the complication of administering them in a time when it's not safe to be so close together, but fundamentally also recognizing the depth of trauma that is being experienced and disproportionately borne by certain communities. We have a problem with the exam and with the exam school structure relative to our entire high school structure in Boston. Last school year, I visited every single Boston Public High School that would accept me. I got around to 20-plus schools and spent an hour plus with the school leaders, students, teachers, et cetera. At almost every single one of those visits, the structure of our high schools and how students are assigned to different schools came up as a major barrier for how students are learning, how we are resourcing our schools, and the deep inequities that we see from school to school, right as soon as you set foot in the building and then in the opportunities that students face, the resources they're given, the supports that they're surrounded with. So we have to be honest about that in this moment and be very honest that at least the one thing that we should not do is try to make the harm worse. The disproportionate disparities that we're already seeing in terms of this test and the structure of enrollment and assignments, what we can't do is move forward in a way that is for sure going to, sorry, battery running low. What we can't do is move forward in a way that will for sure exacerbate these disparities, knowing that we're going to be administering a standardized test to admit students into a structure where we're already seeing underrepresentation of students of color and knowing that the students who are taking, who would take this test, that the black and brown students, their families have disproportionately experienced the public health harms, the loss, the infection rates, the economic harms, the stressors. And so that trauma still needs to be addressed by the district as a whole. Moving forward with this test at this time will certainly exacerbate that going into the next school year. So as we have these conversations, I'm really grateful to the lead sponsor for crafting this in a way that focused on the short term and the immediate, but also on the big picture and the structural conversations that we very much need to have to ensure that every student, every high school student in Boston Public Schools has the resources, supports, and opportunities that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselors Arroyo and Wu for your advocacy in this space. As a city counselor and a mother, it has been a major concern of mine to see how entrance exam data has been misused. Having those different kinds of perspectives is crucial because we can't view the issues like education in a silo. Education is a civil right, and we need to start applying that lens when it comes to the relationship between the students who have and the students who have not. the relationship between the students who have and the students who have not. There are students in our neighborhoods who are not getting the same access because they can't afford the test prep, and they do not live in a neighborhood district that is in one of the feeder schools that ensures all of their children and students are prepared for the entrance exam. Since before COVID-19, the disparities in our education systems were felt, and unless we act quickly and responsibly, they will continue. We see this as an opportunity to call people in and not call people out. As city officials, we need to lead by example for our young people by creating open, accessible communication of all things that impact their lives. Now is the time to lead and lead with an accountability lens. We need to be sure that we have this hearing, and we're activating parents, students, and teachers, so many, and so many others who aren't just the same usual suspects. Thank you to, again, to the councillors for putting this together and inviting me to participate. We look forward to working with you both. And I also just want to point out that there was a task force that was created to inform, you know, to inform decision-makers, and they were not listened to. So I'm just really curious even about the process and how we even got to this point because there was already a lot of advocacy made on behalf of the community and educators to suspend this and why it would not hurt. So I think that that is also an issue that we, that. And the last thing that I'll say is that, you know, I went to every single Boston Public School that you could imagine. My mom didn't even know about exam schools. We didn't even know that they existed. And I feel as though when it comes to the exam school conversation, we need to really be super mindful that access is definitely something that is not accessible to all. And so making this test and giving us an opportunity to reexamine the entrance and the exam is really important. So thank you all.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor O'Malley. Councillor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the three cosponsors. Obviously, this is a very pertinent and important conversation to have, and I look forward to the hearing. I wanted to just briefly touch upon some of the issues that were raised, specifically as it relates to the test, as it relates to every effort that we ought to be making as a city to have the exam schools, particularly Boston Latin School, better reflect the diversity and the diversity of the city. I think that's something that we all absolutely agree on. I'm actually excited with the NWEA test as something that is universally regarded as one of the leaders in facilitating both anti-bias language as well as more equitable assessment, which is something that's very, very important. I completely agree with the previous, or one of the previous speaker's quote that we can't exacerbate the disparities during this time, the racial disparities, particularly in our exam schools. Could not agree with that sentiment more. And I think there's an opportunity to really look and employ at some new tools, objective tools, but nevertheless, tools that will allow for better diversity in our exam schools. One of the conversations lately seems to be, and several have mentioned to it, and several others likely will mention to it, is to cancel the test for this year. And while I appreciate that, I want to sort of answer it two ways. The first being, there is no stipulation that suggests that the test should be administered in October, November. As it relates now, as everyone knows, many of us have taken it, others' children have taken it, or friends or family members have taken it. You take a test typically at the end of October or early November. You usually get the result, you can get the results as frequently or as closely related to that date in about a week, and then in March, the school department will send out their letters, acceptance letters for a school year that begins that September. So we're talking about an 11- or 10-month wait between taking the test and when school starts. There's no fast rule that would suggest that we need to do it that quickly. So obviously, if conditions do not approve, or if there is a second wave, as I think many of us believe is likely, and many epidemiologists believe is likely, there is nothing to suggest that we would have to hold the NWEA test this November. We could very well wait until the situation was much better and obviously healthier for our kids. We all agree that the most important thing is the health of our kids, and offering a test to thousands of students in close proximity is, would not be helpful this early. So we could certainly push this back to allow for healthier atmosphere. But aside from that, one thing that concerns me if we were to just get rid of the test is that you very well could exacerbate the disparities if the criteria was just grades. We couldn't use the MCAS as a criteria because that was canceled. If the criteria was an essay contest or recommendations from teachers, you very well could exacerbate these racial disparities in the exam school that we're trying to address. So I just want to put that out there. I think this hearing will give us an opportunity to delve a little deeper into some of these. I know that the mayor and the superintendent have convened a group, or likely, it was mentioned at the school committee hearing last Wednesday, to look at other strategies. I fully believe that there are a number of strategies that we're not employing, that we ought to, that it's our, living in this moment, it's our responsibility to do. But I would also submit that in exams such as the NWEA, which again is a world leader to address some of the shortcomings in prior exams, really ought to be part of that portfolio approach, an objective portfolio approach. So I look forward to the hearing and look forward to the continued conversation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Campbell. Councillor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I too want to thank the makers for the hearing order and of course, look forward to the discussion. I also want to thank you, Madam President, not only for the partnership in our work with respect to these longstanding inequities and lack of access, or troubling patterns that we see with respect to community, families and students of color not gaining access, and mainly to Boston Latin School, right? In our work, we sat down with all three principals, and they really spoke to, particularly the O'Brien, how they are extremely diverse, but all the exam schools tend to be lumped together, and that really, when we're talking about true lack of diversity, it tends to be Latin School, Latin Academy, then John D. O'Brien. So I want to thank you for your leadership and partnership on these issues. I also want to, of course, thank you for your leadership when you were at MAC on these issues, right? These are longstanding issues, and so I'm glad to see this conversation continuing. I really am happy to participate in the first part of the hearing order, which Councillor Arroyo mentioned, which is on the exam, the new exam, the process by which that vendor was selected, the task force, who said that we should not administer the exam, at least not this year. Many folks on the task force don't think we should do away with the entire exam. But so I look forward to just that conversation and that narrow piece because I think there's a lot of questions. I also, of course, continue to look forward to the latter piece of the hearing order, which is really getting at these gaps and these disparities that we've been talking about for a really long time. And I will say, you know, as a Boston Latin School alum, I am engaged in these conversations from many different angles. I mean, personally, it is near and dear. I always talk about my brother. He graduated from the Burke High School. He went to the Madison before that. The resources and the opportunities that were afforded me at Boston Latin School did not exist at the Burke or the Madison, at Madison Park back then. And, you know, back then, the Burke wasn't even accredited. It was an incredible team. Dr. Mack, who the previous headmaster, was a teacher there. I mean, they were working really hard and doing just incredible work with limited resources and human capital. And so the inequities is not just in terms of access, it's also around resources of our high schools and many of our schools. So personally, this matters to me. Professionally, I'm in contact, of course, with folks at Latin School, with our teachers, our principals, advocates, residents. And this, like the policing conversation, can easily create an us versus them. I think what is critically important that everyone understands when we're talking about inequitable education for every single family that lives in the city of Boston, is that right now, regardless of your race, regardless of where you live in this city, and we know that the inequities are more pronounced if you're Black or Brown, and in certain neighborhoods. But putting all that aside for just a minute, regardless even of your income, right now, if you were going through the Boston Public School system, it is a very narrow, there is a very narrow pathway to success. And, you know, it's almost the luck of the lottery, whoever hits the lottery. What is that pathway? You hopefully get into a pre-K seat, you hope. You get into hopefully a good elementary school. You hopefully get into a good middle school, and then you hopefully get into a good high school. And we know that pathway only leads usually through an exam school in terms of how we define success and our students and families being successful. That is a problem that should concern everyone. That narrow pathway through our current education system to success is extremely troubling. Every high school should be deemed excellent. Every high school, every elementary, every middle school should have the resources they need to be successful for their teachers, their staff, their principals, to deliver the education they want to deliver to their students. There should be numerous pathways through Boston Public Schools for our families to be successful and for our children to reach their dreams, whether it is going through a classical education, VOTEC, technology, arts, whatever it is. And right now, the perception, sometimes real, sometimes not, is that narrow pathway through an exam school. That is extremely troubling and should be for everyone. And so I look forward to this conversation, of course, around the exam schools and access and the test. But I'm always, I always think it's critically important that we raise up the narrow pathway conversation in all of our high schools because they do not get the media attention they deserve, or the attention they deserve, given the fact that many of our high schools have limited resources and are doing all they can to ensure our families are successful. It's really hard to do that, though, if you have little resources, limited human capital, or if all of your students tend to be new arrivals, English language learners, or special needs students, all concentrated in your one school. That's hard work. So kudos to our folks in the other schools that are really pushing hard to make sure their students are successful, but that, I hope, will also be a part of these conversations. Absolutely looking forward to it. Please add my name to the hearing order, and thank you to the makers again. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Councillor Campbell. The Chair recognizes Councillor Asabi George. Councillor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank the makers for this order. I know that the exam school test is an issue of particular contention in our city. We certainly need to make every effort to ensure that our exam schools are accessible to all qualified students and that the test itself does not discriminate against our students of color. This work is long overdue and something that we've been working towards over the last, I can't even say how many years we've been working towards this. And there's certainly right now a great deal of confusion around the role of the OAG Task Force, as well as the requirements of the district in choosing the exam vendor. I hope that this hearing will clarify these issues for us and for the public, and I look forward to the discussion and assessing the impact of the exam school admissions test on enrollment. Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Braden. Councillor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to lend my name in support of this effort. I know I come from another country, but I, we had a selection process when I was a child, a young person. At 11 years old, we did an exam school test, and I went to a little country primary school that was poorly resourced, and everyone flunked the test. And we all went to a very good, comprehensive high school, general admission down the street, three miles from our home. So I did not go to an exam school. My mother paid extra money for preparation for my siblings to do tutorials to prepare for the exam school test, and they went to an exam school. It really, one of my big concerns, and I want to echo Councillor Campbell's remarks, I really feel that the high-stakes test, the exam school is a high-stakes test that a lot of families feel is like a make-or-break thing because they are concerned about the standard of, or the perception, and many of what happens in our other high schools. We should have really, there's incredible work being done in our high schools, our teachers, staff, working so hard with a very diverse student population. But I really want to get to a place in Boston in the very near future where parents don't feel that it's the end of the world if their child does not get into an exam school, that they have confidence that there are other options, other high schools that will provide excellent education, and that there is a pathway to success, and that it's not, doesn't hang on the exam school admission. In our neighborhood, I've talked to families who, it's like the end of the world, they get to a stage where the child doesn't pass the exam school and they decide to leave the city. And that should not happen. They are able, they have the capacity and the availability to do that, that's a choice they make. But I want all children to be able to succeed, and I want us to support and cultivate the other exam, high schools in our city so that everyone can be confident that they can have a pathway to success regardless of whether they get into an exam school in Boston. Thank you so much.
You so much. The Chair recognizes Councillor Bach. Councillor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to commend the makers and say to the point that Councillor Wu made about not, not making a terrible situation worse at the moment, I just think it's really important for us to find a way to do admission to the exam schools this year that is not based on test scores. I just think we're going, we all know that it needs to be shaken up for this year. I mean, normally, there's an averaging of people's spring grades from the prior, you know, year, the spring, as we know, was a, was a loss for many of our students from a learning perspective. And you combine that with the idea of sitting down and taking a test at home, or coming and taking and being afraid you're going to catch an illness. I mean, it's just, it's just, in this moment, it's just obvious that we're in a time of exception. And so I think that no matter, no matter what, we need to be looking for a different criteria this year. And I think what's exciting about that is the chance to try something and, and see what, you know, what a class that's admitted differently in a pandemic year can do. And I do want to say, I think that that area of, of how we handle this emergency could, could be creatively connected to the procurement. So, you know, personally, I would be more comfortable anyways if we had a cohort of students who took the NWE test, EA test this year purely as a practice thing, like to see what it turns out. Because we were having a conversation about, you know, is this a more just exam, more equitably designed, et cetera? Personally, precisely because of the high stakes that so many councillors have discussed, the idea of flipping a switch and making a new test the basis for that high-stakes decision the very first time you run it in the city seems to me unwise. So I wonder if there's an opportunity, you know, if the district does move forward this procurement, to think about a kind of pilot way of letting that test be sat by some students this year, but not using it to guide admission and learn it and seeing what we learn along the way. But, but I just wanted to voice that, to me, there's no question that we have to be looking for a different way to do admission this year. So thank you, and I commend the makers, and please add my name.
Thank you, Councillor Bach. The Chair recognizes Councillor Edwards. Councillor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I echo the comments of my colleagues. I want to especially stress the fact that children who are already burdened with food insecurity, rent insecurity, and fear right now. Many of those, those children are low-income individuals and families, and they're faced with already intense pressure. To then ask them to go and take a test in the middle of this pandemic and to deal with that, I think it only is going to exacerbate the well-known fact that standardized tests really don't test your intelligence, they test your access to resources. And we are watching people feel stressed, feel intense pressure, and trying to figure out how they're even going to stay in the city of Boston. To then ask those children to go in there and claim any kind of neutrality is naive on our part. So that's, I just want to say that. I think we're going to, we're going to exacerbate that. I think a pilot idea from Councillor Bach is an excellent way because at this particular moment in time, we have to change everything. Even if it was a pilot for this particular class of individuals, because we're in the middle of a pandemic, it's time to be that creative. I, in general, am a little bit skeptical about using tests at all to access higher education or to access, quote-unquote, "better" schools. I think we should really be thinking about, especially even this year, looking at the top 10% of our, our middle schools or elementary schools and BPS kids having access or just streamline into our exam schools, maybe just for this year as a pilot, but seeing that as a possible model that we can look at in the future. I think we have learned that sometimes, most times, if you really are intentional about the diversity you're trying to have, it's being creative, looking at pilots. And if people are concerned about the quality of education or the ability for, for some of these kids to keep up, I think the city could easily invest in either leadership academies, academic resources to help them over the summer before they enter into the exam school, be prepared as part of the regular course. So if you've So if you've, if you've gone out of your way and demonstrated that you're in the top 10%, or top 5%, or top 1% of your high school, then the city should say, I see this potential in this young person. We can invest in them and they can be prepared for an exam school. I think we can be as creative and should be as creative as possible right now in looking at how we make sure that our exam schools are accessible, but also we're not exasperating already huge gaps in our students and, and further pouring gasoline on that, again, on the fire. That standardized tests, they test what resources you have access to. They don't test your intelligence. They do not, do not, and I'll say this again to every BPS kid, they do not test your potential, where you're going to go in life, and they do not certainly test your intelligence. And if we know this, it's time for us to do better by our kids. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And obviously, I would like to say that I concur with the previous two speakers. We're in sort of a new world moving forward as we try to reopen our schools. I think we're going to have to start to be really imaginative and create a number of different pilots. And so I would concur with that. I also, it's the reason I don't support the MCAS as the sort of the sole determining factor with respect to how one is performing as well as how the school is performing, that there's a number of different factors that need to be weighed when assessing one's, the child in our school system's ability to comprehend and to, to flourish in school. So it should be a factor, but it should not be the sole determining factor. I would also like to, to, to address when we're talking about pilot and we're thinking about some of the protocols, particularly in the transportation side for our students, you know, one child per seat, possibly every other seat. Think about how ludicrous that is. And think about how many children are just not going to be able to get to school. We're going to need to think a little outside the box there. We might have to pilot allowing kids to, to go to school closer to their home because it's going to beat the alternative of them not going to school. So I think we need to be open to a number of different discussions around pilot, as our colleague Counselor Clark had referenced and Counselor Edwards had just alluded to. And it's going to take a lot of folks rolling up their sleeves to be creative. And our hope is that it's a sort of a temporary fix, but if we're not going to have children going to school, or if we're going to have situations where they're going to be going to school every other week or every other day, there's going to be a lot of teaching and learning that's not happening. And that's a huge disservice. And the gaps that we address and we talk about addressing every, every week on, at our council hearings are going to continue to get wider and wider. Education is, is the greatest equalizer, and we need to have kids learning as much as possible. And so thinking outside the box around our, our, our school assignments and the transportation formula, I think, needs to be forefront. And also, on this particular issue, I would like to see through the makers if they could just add representatives from Metco. I'd be curious to see sort of what, what role Metco sort of plays in, 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 in sort of taking away some of the, the racial and ethnic representation of our exam schools. I think they're, they're a factor. I don't know to what degree they're a factor, but I would assume that there are a number of, of, of students who are performing at a high level that are in some of our surrounding suburban community schools. And those are students, quite frankly, that could be competing in our exam schools. And I would just like to see, sort of see what that number is and see what role it plays. But look forward to a hearing because I, in my office, we have been getting calls from folks with questions about the new exam vendor and how it's going to work, as some of the issues that Counselor Bach alluded to. Because we're moving into another academic year, these tests usually occur in the fall. What does that mean this fall? What does it mean for next year's academic year? Lots of questions, lots of concerns, lots of anxiety, particularly for parents with children of the Boston Public School. So hopefully, we can have an expedited hearing on this and look forward to participating. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Let me just quickly add, there's been a lot of discussion, so I'll try to keep it very brief. You know, very important conversation. So I'll start by thanking the makers. As has already been mentioned, did a lot of work at Massachusetts Advocates for Children on exam school admissions and looking at diversity there with a number of community-based organizations, was a member of the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Task Force. In fact, MAC was the group that advocated for its creation and so sat on that task force. Was very disappointed to see a vendor selected two days after the recommendation. Now, the authority rests with the school committee, obviously, but the recommendation had been made and it seemed to have fallen upon deaf ears. The recommendation was that there would be a moratorium on testing, that we figure out how to ensure that those who are being most impacted by, whether it's COVID or structural racism, are not going to continue to be disadvantaged. I'm hopeful about this test. Clearly, I mean, it has to be, I would hope it's an improvement over the last test. We know the last test was testing for things that our young people hadn't even learned yet. So that, they were already at a disadvantage compared to students who were either going to suburban schools or Catholic schools or private schools or charter schools. BPS kids were at a disadvantage because they were being tested on things that they had not seen in the classroom yet. So hopefully, this exam is an improvement. But I think when we're talking about equity, when we're talking about diversity in the exam schools, I don't think it's a quick fix of just change the exam. I think there are lots of other things we have to consider. Back in 2016, I was part of a small group that Superintendent Chang had pulled together to look at diversity in admissions and things like looking at the top 10% of all schools was something we were considering. So I heard Counselor Edwards mention that. Looking at zip codes and making sure that we had students from all the different zip codes. Anyway, I think it's a really important conversation. I'm grateful to the makers for putting it on the table. We need to make sure that our, that our young people are able to have every opportunity that they deserve. And I would agree with Counselor Edwards' assessment that the test is not testing their ability or their intelligence, but certainly whether or not they've had access to resources. So before assigning to docket, I want to make sure that we've gotten everyone who wants to sign on. I know some of you mentioned it in your remarks, but a show of physical hands for those who want to sign on to the hearing order, please. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Campbell, and please also add the Chair. Docket 0886 will be referred to the Committee on Education. At this time, I am going to turn it over to Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0887 into the record?
Thank you, Counselor. Docket 0887, Counselor Janey offered the following order for hearing regarding predatory and deceptive practices by competitive energy suppliers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. President Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I am proud to sponsor this hearing order on a very important racial and economic justice issue examining deceptive energy suppliers. For those who may be tuning in to our meeting, neighborhoods like Roxbury, Mattapan, and Dorchester, this is a huge issue. This is nothing new. For years, Black and Latinx communities have fallen prey to deceptive tactics by third-party energy suppliers promising lower cost. But in reality, many residents end up paying more on their electric bills rather than if they had just stayed with their original energy supplier. Other cities across the Commonwealth have already implemented policies that help eliminate and remove these companies and their practices and from them targeting neighborhoods, particularly poor neighborhoods of color. I believe that Boston should follow. We should have this important conversation, especially now when we know so many of our residents are not just fearful about, around the economic pressures of COVID-19, but the, the actual health issues around COVID-19. Many of our residents cannot afford to take on an additional hardship of getting swindled by an energy company who is promising lower rates. We know that for those who are dependent upon rental relief, those resources are running dry. And so our residents are going to be hit pretty hard. And we don't want for different companies to come in and take advantage. I want to take just a quick moment to lift up the organizations, the community groups who have been working on this issue and who brought this issue forward. And that are groups like ACE, the Alternative for Community and Environment, located in District Seven, the Lawyers for Civil Rights, has been active, and certainly our own Attorney General Mara Healy. And so really grateful for the work that they do on these types of issues and look forward to bringing them into our conversation along with residents. Hoping that folks will sign on and that we will have a hearing in the near future to address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for your advocacy in this space. All across the city, these competitive energy suppliers are trying to mislead people into spending more money on their energy bill, including myself. I had someone knock on my door trying to persuade me to change my energy supplier, and they asked to see my bill. They want, they, they were trying to get information and, you know, and during these times, I agree, people would be willing to do whatever is necessary to help save some coins here and there. But I think that it's important for us to have this conversation. And thank you for moving this along. But that experience was a little bit bizarre and honestly confusing to me when my door was locked, when someone knocked on my door, which is why, which is, which is what we, the reason why we're having this hearing for people across the city. Low-income neighborhoods are being targeted and misled. And given the times, many of us would jump at the opportunity to save some money, but the investigations show these cheaper options are actually costing people more. It's gotten to the point where it's hard to tell the real offers from the scams. All of us, including myself, would benefit from a clear communication and more honest advertising. As the Chair of, and of the Committee of Small Business and Consumer Affairs and Workforce Development, I look forward to participating in this hearing to protect consumers and hold these predators accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mahia. Would you like your name added?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, please.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Mahia as a cosponsor. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Vice President, please add my name. I also have noticed several constituents have called me recently about people knocking on my door, especially in communities of color, immigrant communities, and targeting elderly, especially, our seniors. And during difficult times, during difficult economic times, people are obviously inclined to save, to save money. But many of these companies that are doing it are trying to exploit our seniors, exploit our immigrant neighbors. So I think this issue is critical, especially as time goes on and we'll see more and more people desperate because of the economic crisis. So I think, you know, I want to say thank you to the maker for this important discussion that will take place. And hopefully, we can get some type of, you know, legislation or, or rules that prevent these type of companies from manipulating people that are in desperate need. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counselor from South Boston as a cosponsor. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you to the maker for bringing this before us. I, I would ask that if we could consider adding a small conversation during this larger conversation around the impacts of our residents and our neighbors, the impact on locally-owned small businesses, because this is also a tactic that happens in, in our small businesses across the city with the door-to-door pressure as well as the phone calls. So if she would entertain that option, I'd greatly appreciate it. Either way, please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Madam Clerk, please add the at-large counsel from Dorchester as a cosponsor. I will also relate, if we need sponsor, the Council President responded with a thumbs up to that request, Counselor Sabi George, so it will be included. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Roselandale. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And thank you so much to the lead sponsor for this really important hearing order. We know this has been an issue for a long time, and especially now, it is, it is urgent. I'm also really excited to, that we can celebrate at this council meeting when we're discussing this issue, that a long, long push by Mr. Vice President and community advocates and, and crowd that the whole council had supported this, that our push for community choice energy was finally approved by the state just about a week ago. So that means that all the work that the council did to ensure that we would be default negotiating a new greener electricity contract for residents without any need to sign anything, respond to anyone coming to your door, do anything at all, that is going to be seamless, and we're moving forward with that. So a, a sort of sub-goal of that big push was to ensure that we could tell people, you don't have to respond to anyone at your door if you want greener electricity because the city's done it for you, and you can even opt into even more through the city if you want, but you can trust what the city of Boston has done. So I'm really excited, just wanted to add that celebration and thank you to everyone who's involved with that, to this conversation, too. Please add my name.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Madam Clerk, please add the at-large counsel from Roselandale as a cosponsor. And thank you, Counselor Wu, for your great partnership and leadership on CCE. It is indeed a, a great celebration for all of us in our city. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from Mattapan. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and congratulations to you and Counselor Wu. And thank you to Madam President for this hearing order. This is a major issue in my district. Just last week, we had several emails and calls from folks who were experiencing, folk showing up at their doors. I think now, you know, COVID, it kind of died down. It's only come back. I will tell you, I also, the Attorney General's Office is extremely responsive to these constituent cases, so want to thank the Attorney General and her team for their leadership and, and reaching out to constituents here in Boston with respect to this issue. But it's a timely conversation, a timely discussion. So thank you so much, Madam President, for bringing it forward, and please do add my name.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counselor from Mattapan as a cosponsor. Seeing no further discussion, would any other counselors who didn't speak wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add the District Counselor from Hyde Park. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel, District Counselor from Austin-Brighton. Please add the District Counselor from Beacon Hill. Please add the at-large counsel from South Boston. Please add the Chair's name. And docket 0887 shall be referred to the Committee on-
Vice Chair?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Counselor, it's Counselor Edwards. I'm so sorry. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counselor from East Boston as well. My apologies.
And Counselor Flynn signed on also, I think.
Yes, signed on. Okay. See, Nandi, please refer docket 0887 to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Madam Clerk, would you next please read docket 0888 into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket 0888, Counselor Janey offered the following order for hearing concerning residents and neighborhoods in Boston most affected by student, student debt post-pandemic.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Before moving on, I would like to add Counselor Mahia as an original cosponsor.
She is duly added. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very proud to sponsor this hearing order examining student debt in Massachusetts. The U.S. Department of Education reports that in Massachusetts, 871,600 borrowers owe roughly $28.87 billion collectively in federal student loan debt, which is nearly $33,000 on average per borrower. And that does not include private loans. And that borrowers in low-income neighborhoods experience even higher rates of delinquency and defaults, and that they often owe more money and have higher interest. Examining college debt is more than just looking to erase the numbers. It's taking steps to alleviate and disrupt the harmful cycle of intergenerational poverty in our communities highlighted in the Black and Brown agenda. Examining student debt is an important piece in addressing the enormous wealth gap and the existing inequities as we move towards an equitable economic recovery. By working with all of you on the council, with our federal partners in government like Senators Warren and Markey, and our Congresswoman Pressley, our former colleague, we can explore strategies for eliminating debt, and we can uplift low-income workers and families, communities of color, seniors, and help move folks out of poverty and toward generational wealth. I want to take a quick moment to thank- I want to take a quick moment to thank the Zero Debt Massachusetts Coalition for their tireless advocacy and support on this issue, and I look forward to continuing to work with them and, and many others. I hope folks will sign on. I, I know that this is a huge issue, particularly as we're talking about consumer affairs and the involvement of our AG and what is happening in terms of people defaulting on the loans and predatory lenders in this case as well. So looking forward to a great conversation in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice President, and thank you, Madam President, for working on this issue. This issue is deeply personal for me. Growing up, I never expected to go to college, and so when I finally finished and became the first in my family to graduate college, it really felt like an accomplishment. But something that you're never really prepared for is the student debt that follows us long after that achievement. What is even more concerning are the hurdles that our students of color and students with college degrees have to jump through just to make ends meet. Those in low-income communities often struggle to pay their student debt, which results in defaulting on loans, paying extra for interest, and losing benefits. We need to seriously commit to the work of rerouting systemic barriers to economic security during and on this pandemic. And like we've said before, COVID didn't create these systemic inequalities, they just exposed them and made them worse. I look forward to working with Counselor Janey to find solutions to take the burden off of our hard-working people. And I also want to give a shout-out to Zero Debt Massachusetts for their long, long run in this advocacy space and making sure that we address this issue. Looking forward to not just having a conversation, for the fact of having a conversation of the conversation in a public hearing, but really to come to some resolution and figuring out how we can move this work forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mahia. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counsel from South Boston. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and obviously thanks to the maker. Please add my name. And as mentioned in her hearing order, there are cities that have programs that can help students with student loan debt. In collaboration with Spark Boston, the city is offering counseling sessions with the American Student Assistance about financial wellness and student loans, et cetera, and that's, that pertains to City of Austin employees, so obviously that's a good program. We should continue to grow these types of programs and make them widely available and accessible in meaningful ways to our residents that are in the greatest amount of need. So this is very important. It's also very timely. So again, please add my name and look forward to an expedited hearing with the sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please add the at-large Counsel from South Boston as a cosponsor. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and I just want to thank the makers for their leadership on this in Zero Debt Massachusetts. I actually have student loan debt, excessive student loan debt, if you ask me. I graduated from a state school, Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts, debt-free. I made that decision specifically, in part because I knew that I would get in-state tuition. I'd be able to handle that in a different way. When I made the decision to go to law school, I knew I wanted to be a public defender, and I also knew that my family did not have the generational wealth or the ability to carry my debt, and so I had to take out student loans to do that, and I made a determination to do that. And I remember at the time, hearing from multiple people who, who wanted me to be clear on how much that debt would impact my life. And the reality is, I made a decision to go to law school, and many of our folks in our communities do, and almost every person of color who I went to law school with did make this decision on the basis that they weren't going to allow dreams that they had or the contributions that they wanted to make to society be determined by whether or not they had the money to do that or not, or their family had generational wealth to do that or not. And so my student debt at the time of graduation was about $200,000. And because I made the determination to be a public defender, it gained in five years $100,000, give or take, in interest. And so my student debts are somewhere around $300,000, simply for the belief in myself and my abilities, and frankly, I did well in law school. I was able to do well as a public defender. And the reality is that people who came with generational wealth, of which we have a long racial history of why generational wealth does not exist in communities of color, are, are hamstrung by it. That hamstrung my, so that in order to be a public defender, I needed to have a car. And I'll never forget walking in with a credit score in the upper 700s, but needing to co-sign it, because my student loan debts were so high, even though I had a job already on the table, and it was going to take care of that, and I needed to co-sign. One of my parents had to co-sign with a seven, like 770 credit score for a vehicle. And so when we talk about the impacts that things have on families when it comes to the ability to have children, and think about what that looks like with your student loan debt, when it comes to the idea of buying or purchasing a home, or getting involved in a rental program, or getting involved in anything that requires the ability to use your credit, whether or not you have good credit scores or not, and I do, the debt itself is, is a barrier. And when we talk about generations and generations and generations of racism, frankly, and structural, institutional racism that has not allowed families to create the opportunities required, we can't create financial barriers to education, and we can't hamstring our kids who do all the things we ask them to do, to go to college, to go to law school, to go to doctor, to go get a doctorate, to be doctors, and then tell them when they finish that they have to pay the price of, of generations and generations of racial inequity that then keeps their inability to create cycles of wealth for their own families after they've done everything they have to do. And so I, I am grateful for this. I think this is an issue that affects far more people than folks are even aware of. I think there's a, a shame attached to student debt, and people don't talk so often about their student debts, because debt is a dirty word in our country. And the reality is that when we, when we do that, we exclude them to the shadows, and this is a great conversation to have, because it's a pertinent issue that touches almost every aspect of somebody's life, including, I'll be frank, in my own life, my decisions on when and how I would get married, when and how I would explore the expansion of my family, when and how I would explore the ability to buy a home. And so, you know, this touches every level of somebody's life, and I'm grateful that we are having this conversation. So thank you so much to the makers, and thank you, President Janey, for, for something that I think touches all of our lives.
You're signing one?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo as a cosponsor. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Vice President, excuse me. I, I will be succinct. The fact is, we, I also have debt. I also was one of the first in my family to go to law school, and it is a detractor from pursuing education. And that, that, the two shouldn't be in the same conversation. How much debt can you take on should not at all hinder or even impact your, how much education you'd like to pursue. That being said, I do recall we had talked about, and there was an announcement earlier in the administration's, earlier in the administration, about access to or pipelining into some free community colleges. I recall, and I, I'm only asking, bringing this up to the, to the Chair, to the sponsor and to the, to the cosponsors, as part of this conversation, for us to pick up that conversation as to what happened, or if that's still happening, with access to community college. I think that is one way to eliminate student debt, is how we marry and pipeline our, our school kids into community college, so that they're graduating with more college credits, so that when they go to college, they're steps, sometimes a year ahead, and they have to borrow less and have to spend, spend less time in. So I'd like to, to bring that up. I, I also wanted to make sure we were also talking about our, how we move with, and the UMass Boston. So there's, there's higher education institutions as well that we should be, be talking about, and also pipelines that are debt-free that we should be talking about, and I, I hope that can be part of this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Edwards. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Edwards as a cosponsor.
Yes.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Mattapan. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you to the leadership of, of our President with respect to this critical issue, not only for residents in my district, but all across the city. I just will say two things. One, everything Counsel Arroyo said, literally everything he said, I sign on to. He summed it up perfectly in the many facets of this issue with respect to not only myself personally, but also particularly communities of color and residents of color. One layer I would love to add to the conversation, and this is to the maker, is many of our students are graduating from our high schools, our BPS high schools, and going to community colleges or going to universities, and taking on debt for remedial classes. So classes or things they should have learned while in our system. This be, this continues to be a, a part of conversations I'm having in the education space that sometimes connect to the student debt piece. So if you should have, for example, I don't know, gotten calculus or geometry or something like that, something you need to pursue a degree at a university level, you're now going to college to pay for that, and many of our students drop out, having not completed those remedial classes, they leave the universities or the colleges, and they leave with debt. And so this is a major topic of discussion that I think happens in silos, so would love for it to be included here. And thank you again, Madam President, for your leadership on this issue. Thank you to the advocates, and please add my name.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Campbell as a cosponsor. Seeing no further discussion, would any other counselors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from South Boston. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Madam Clerk, please add the at-large Counselor from Dorchester. Madam Clerk, please add the at-large Counselor from Roselandale. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from Alston Brighton. And Madam Clerk, please add the Chair. Docket 0888 shall be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Can you hear me now? Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Madam Clerk, we will now move on in our agenda to-
Are we assigning?
Oh, yes. Did you assign that?
Apologies, I thought I had the, docket 0888 will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development. Thank you. Thank you, Madam-
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0889?
at Boston Public Schools and other institutions.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Wu. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We have all seen in our districts just how deep the issues of food insecurity are in Boston prior to the pandemic and, and now exposed during the pandemic. This hearing order is very comprehensive, and thanks to the work of a summer policy fellow in my office, so shout-out to Tali, and thank you so much for everything that she had put together on all different parts around food access all across, you know, over the last 10 weeks or so. We need to have a conversation about how all of these strands are fitting together. Boston has done remarkable coordination and, and planning when it came to making sure that meals could get distributed at various sites to families, particularly in our school system. But we need to talk about the nutritional, nutritional value of those meals. You know, hearing lots of concerns from families about the quality of school foods compared to what students had been getting before in, in schools, and so what will that look like in the fall as we're, again, weighing various transitions and models? We need to follow up on the GFPP program, the Good Foods Purchasing Program, an ordinance that this council had passed last term, guaranteeing that all food procurement by the city, and again, centering on the Boston Public Schools, would match values along sustainability, health, local food production, humane practices for treatment of animals in the process, as well as fair labor standards, all through the food supply chain. So as we are moving into a new BPS model, how are we, what's the progress on that? We're coming up on some deadlines within that ordinance as well for reporting and tracing back ingredients, so we can move forward in that process. And finally, I just wanted to note that the council had also sent up a letter urging the administration and offering collaboration to participate in a federal program that many other cities have taken up. There are FEMA funds available where cities can match federal funds in order to partner with local restaurants to provide fresh food, prepared meals to residents. This would ensure that we are not only continuing to expand food access, but also engage our entrepreneurs in a very, very difficult time and create opportunity for local business owners, particularly entrepreneurs of color and Boston residents. So there's a lot to talk about, and I'm looking forward to having this conversation about one of the most basic ways that we're thinking about equity, food, and the nutritional access that we're giving all our residents.
I was muted. I apologize. I see a couple of blue hands. I will recognize speakers. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Please add my name. As Counsel Wu just referenced, food insecurity was an issue in our city pre-pandemic, and the pandemic has only magnified the need for programs that alleviate food insecurity in our communities. The mayor and a number of different departments and agencies did a huge amount of work to get food sites up and running online during the pandemic. It was an enormous undertaking that occurred daily, and we were able to, to feed thousands upon thousands upon thousands of folks across the city. Again, a huge endeavor. This hearing will help us review what existing policies and procedures we have in place to help us learn from the last few months, strengthen our policies moving forward. So look forward to partnering with the lead sponsor and look forward to an expedited hearing. Very timely, very important. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes-
Thanks to the maker. Thanks to the maker.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Wu for uplifting this issue. This issue is something that is very near and dear to all of us in our office. During the initial outbreak of the coronavirus, our office filed a hearing order on food access and cultural competency. We felt that it was crucial to have that conversation, as we heard from many people across the city that getting access to culturally competent food was a struggle. Most recently, we've been also working with a team of young people across the city on the issues of school lunch. Addressing the quality and cultural competency of the food that we are handling, that we're handing out is crucial, and we look forward to participating in this discussion. Having grown up in Boston Public Schools and eating that lunch, I know that one thing is access to it, the other is an opportunity for us to talk about the quality of it. And so really looking forward to joining this conversation and ask that you add me as a cosponsor. Thank you.
Wonderful. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, please add my name. Want to say thank you to Counsel Wu. It's an incredible, an important issue. It's an issue that impacts everyone in every district. We do see a lot of retirees that are struggling with food access, and as Counsel Flaherty mentioned, I think the mayor and the BPDA did a very good job on food access during this pandemic. It's probably not an issue I spend more time on during this pandemic than food access, just making sure that my constituents had, had food. But again, it's a critical issue prior to COVID-19. It's a critical, critical issue now, and, you know, we want to make sure that the food access program also has the necessary resources so that they can continue doing their job, working closely with the age-strong, commission with disabilities as well. So it's an important hearing order, and please add my name. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Sibby George. Counsel Sibby George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the maker, Counsel Wu, for this hearing order. BPS and the Office of Food Access did an incredible job creating and distributing emergency food during this last few months, and they did it quickly and pulled it together almost overnight. There were certainly many bumps in the road, and we owe the staff in both departments and at our- and at our schools enormous thanks, and in our community centers, and in some of our nonprofit partners. We certainly need to examine what went well, what didn't work, and what aims we missed, including our purchasing goals, in this first surge so that we can move swiftly and navigate any future surges and assess the strength of our food system in the city of Boston. There's certainly a lot to learn and to improve upon, and since so much of this hearing order is focused on the Boston Public Schools, I do hope that this hearing- this hearing order will be assigned to the Education Committee, and we certainly will hold a hearing as soon as possible on this if it is so assigned. Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name.
Thank you so much. Anyone looking to sign on? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Edwards, and please also add the Chair. This issue going beyond Boston Public Schools, we will assign it to the Committee of Strong Women, Families, and Communities because it is beyond BPS. But definitely hope that we can all participate, because I know a lot of the food distribution is to our students. We will now move on to docket 0890.
Thank you. Docket 0890, Councilors Flynn and Mahia offer the following order for hearing to discuss internet access and digital equity in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, may I also add Counselor Flaherty as an original sponsor?
Yes, seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Flaherty is added as an original cosponsor.
Full 12.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, we filed this hearing order to strategize and to ensure access and digital equity in Boston. I think it's a critical issue that everybody have access to a working computer and with the technology that is able to afford them the access to use the computer as well. I see a lot of immigrants, I see a lot of seniors not having access to computers, and I also know that the public libraries can't play a critical role as well. I saw a program recently at the South Boston Public Library that was doing excellent work in helping seniors access the computer. And those are the types of programs I would like to see across our city, giving people the opportunity that haven't been exposed to a computer, giving them the access to Wi-Fi and to a computer access. I want to say thank you to Counselor Mahia. I want to say thank you to Counselor Flaherty for joining me. This is a critical issue, but especially for our seniors and for our immigrant community. Thank you, Madam President.
So, Counselor Mahia was having some difficulty trying to get into the meeting, so I think what I'll do is call upon Counselor Flaherty while we try to get Counselor Mahia back into the meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the makers for adding me as an original cosponsor and doing some work in this space, particularly around Boston Year 13. It's an enormous issue in our city. It's crucial that all of our residents have access to reliable internet and technology that enables them to access opportunities in school, employment, healthcare, and also to participate in public meetings and hearings and to keep them engaged civically. So, they're increasingly being made available that are completely- that are- we're seeing all the Zoom hearings and the Webinars and what have you, so it's obviously related to COVID-19, but keeping people engaged is critical to the work that we do. There are a lot of partners in the private and nonprofit sector that go above and beyond to ensure that our young people in particular and students have access to this technology, such as Digital Ready, who's now currently running a summer apprentice program that provides students with both the industry apprenticeship, but also a home-based digital fab lab, including computers that can run industry-level programs, 3D printing, et cetera, at no cost to these kids. So, we should definitely be including our partners in the private sector in all of these conversations so we can learn about what they're doing and how can we better expand on their efforts and integrate them into our municipal efforts. I often say, and you've often heard me say, that, you know, Boston, we're a resource-rich and an opportunity-rich city, yet a lot of times we find ourselves operating in separate silos, and sometimes it's just a matter of making that contact, or picking up the phone and building that bridge to connect folks to resources. And I think this is a perfect example when we're talking about, you know, internet access and digital equity. There are a lot of good intentions and great efforts underway, many which we're not connected to, and I think if we're able to sort of connect with some of the private and nonprofit sector, folks that are doing this work in this space, we might be able to expand it significantly with all of our reach as District at-large Counselors. Thanks again for adding my name. Look forward to hearing from the other original cosponsor, as well as my colleagues, and look forward to participating in an expedited hearing.
Thank you. We are still experiencing some difficulty with Counselor Mahia trying to join us. Counselor Mahia, are you with us? I don't think she's with us. She's still trying to get back in. Carrie, if you can make sure that Counselor Mahia has the appropriate link and that she can get in. At this time, I will entertain, as we await Counselor Mahia's arrival, I'll entertain other speakers if anyone else wanted to speak on this particular docket. We are on docket 0890, and this is the hearing order to discuss internet access and digital equity. If anyone else would like to speak, you can indicate so by showing your blue Zoom hand. I see a blue Zoom hand, so I will call upon Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just- I just raised my hand to sign on and to ensure that I'm also signed on to the docket before this. I don't believe my hand was saying anything.
Right.
Hopefully that buys enough time for Julia to get back on, but-
Okay. And the Chair recognizes Counselor Sabby George. Counselor Sabby George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just asked to have my name added as well.
Okay. Show of physical hands? We're gonna- Counselor O'Malley? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Braden, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Wu, Counselor Edwards. Please also add the Chair. Once- we will assign this, but once Counselor Mahia joins us, I will certainly allow her the opportunity to speak to this important issue. I know that they are working behind the scenes to get her back in here. So, with docket 0890, that will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Okay? We will now move on to docket 0891, which- Madam Clerk, if you could read that?
Thank you. Docket 0891, Counselor Arroyo offered the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding Boston Police Department court overtime slips and Supervisor of Cases Weekly Report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe you gave me the floor, correct? Yes. Sorry, there was some disturbance during it. So this is 17F to seek the court overtime slips. As we talk about ways in which we're looking at overtime in the BPD, court overtime slips and supervisor court overtime slips are important. The Bay State Banner, I believe, last week did an article looking into the delivery of Simply Discovery in using summons isn't for that purpose. When asked about it, the official who spoke on behalf of BPD said that to his knowledge there was no record kept of that behavior or whether or not people were showing up just to drop off discovery. However, the Supervisor of Cases should be filing case court overtime slips that would illuminate that process, and so I'm seeking those slips through this 17F specifically.
Thank you so much. Docket 0891. Oh, wait. Counselor Arroyo seeks suspension of the rules, right? Here we go. Thank you. Counselor Arroyo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0891. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. The opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0891 has been up. We'll now move on to docket 0892.
Docket 0892, Councilors O'Malley and Campbell offered the following order for hearing to discuss racial disparities in the field interrogation and observation, FIO, data by the Boston Police Department.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Begin by really acknowledging and thanking the incredible work and leadership of our colleague and friend, the District Counselor Mattapan, Counselor Campbell, for her partnership on this and her leadership on this and so many issues as it relates to criminal justice and public safety. We all know on March 9th of this year, Counselor Campbell filed a 17F which compelled the city to turn over missing field interrogation and observation or FIO data over the last few years, and we saw some racial disparities that were incredibly troubling. Black residents account for 69% of stops from that data, but make up just over 25% of the city's population. White residents accounted for about a quarter, 25% of stops, but account for 44.5% of our population. Racial disparities and FIOs have only worsened over the last few years, with stops of black residents increasing by 12.5% between 2016 and 2019, up from 58.5% for the five years before that, 2011 through 2015. Considering the information that we now know, we must ask the question as it relates to stop and frisk. Is it effective? And what are its long-term impacts on communities of color? The data obviously suggests that negative experience with police officers is far more concentrated among Black and Latinx individuals, and we note beyond the data and the numbers that are being seen in this request, but also by constituents, their own stories, as well as colleagues. And it's important to make the transparent ways in which we know the decision around stop and frisk, how it's engaged in the interaction, how we document and justify that decision, as well as sharing the data. And I look forward to continuing this conversation. The purpose of this hearing is to obviously discuss these disparities and doing everything we can to address them and fix them going forward. Thank you again to the- my cosponsor, Counselor Campbell, for her leadership on this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor O'Malley, for the partnership here on very much a critical issue. And you obviously stated the data already, which is really troubling, and the data that we received from the police department only demonstrates that these racial disparities have only gotten worse over the years, which is, of course, extremely troubling and should be concerning to everyone who lives in the city of Boston. So I'm looking forward to this hearing of not just talking about the data, I'm really pushing the department to not only be more transparent, but to releasing this information automatically. It shouldn't have been a sort of a struggle to get this data in the first place. Many folks have been asking for it, advocates, residents who care about this. There's a Bay State Banner article looking at the community perspective with respect to these stop and frisk, and how particularly Black men and women feel when stopped by the police. And so this is a topic of discussion on the ground in many parts of the city with residents who disproportionately are stopped by our police. Like I tell our commissioner, even if our police department is excellent, we can always do better. I think that's true for every department in the city of Boston. And so this hearing, I think, is also another opportunity, not only to push for transparency in the data, but to specifically look at this policy, these practices, and to ask the department if it is indeed effective in reducing incidents of violence or stopping crime. And if not, then how do we change it to policies or supporting other initiatives that have a more proven record of not only not discriminating, but being more effective when it comes to stopping, preventing, and intervening with violence? And lastly, I'll add, you know, we're obviously in a context and climate in which we're talking about what's happening nationally in George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and some of the most egregious cases you could ever imagine. But being stopped by a police officer, and I think some of our colleagues, including Counselor Arroyo, have shared powerful stories about what that feels like, is extremely painful, extremely traumatic. I've also talked to residents who are white residents who've had troubling interactions with the police and talk about the trauma there. So imagine being stopped over and over and over again when you've done nothing wrong, and the effect that leaves on your psyche, the effect that leaves on your humanity. And so I think this is an opportunity for us to say, we don't have to look nationally to know that our department can do better, can be more transparent, can be more racially just. We can just look at what's happening here, and we all should want to participate in this conversation so that no one has to go through an experience that undermines their humanity, that leaves them with such a traumatic experience that they may never recover. And so I'm really looking forward to this conversation and putting forth solutions and ideas around how we change policies and practices within the department that do not target communities of color. And one last final piece is I'm having many conversations right now with young people, and I just was in a conversation earlier this week with eighth graders, who also were doing surveys and sharing about some of their interactions with our police officers. And in one of the surveys, some of the students talked about negative experiences with our officers and the pain and the trauma with respect to those interactions, and they too want to be a part of these conversations. But our conversation went into a direction of the history of this country and the historical context of this country, and not just talking about slavery, not just talking about Jim Crow, but talking about blackness as- and equating blackness with criminality, which is a rich part of this history in this country that we often don't want to talk about. And that was a part of the conversation with these eighth graders. It was very powerful. This too needs to be a part of this conversation too, because there's a why here as to why certain residents with certain skin color are predominantly stopped, and it's not just because of simple bias, it's deeper than that. And so I hope that we also can include folks who have historical- who are learned in academics with this historical knowledge that they also can bring to bear in this conversation, which is critically important. So thank you again, Counselor O'Malley, for the partnership. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, so much. I see Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
I just want to thank the makers for this. These FIO stops are incredibly concerning, especially when they break down the way they do on such a racial line. The reality is that living in any neighborhood or living on any street shouldn't make you a suspect, it shouldn't make you more subject to police involvement or the feeling that you are under constant surveillance. I personally have experienced an FIO stop. They're not pleasant, and I think we've, you know, had these conversations before, and so I won't belabor the point. What I will say is that any conversation about FIO stops has to talk about the constitutionality of these kinds of stops in the first place, and I've heard a lot from some about the idea that liberal judges somehow allow career criminals or folks to, you know, populate our streets. And the reality is, as a public defender, I can tell you that what actually drives those cases in the direction that BPD would prefer they not go is unconstitutional stops, unconstitutional searches, unconstitutional seizures are far more prevalent than they need to be, and when judges are confronted with the unconstitutionality of stops and seizures and searches, they do what the law requires them to do. And so that is something that we really need to look at, the way in which we conduct our stops, the ways in which we conduct our seizures, and ensuring that these things are done constitutionally correct. Otherwise, we can blame liberal judges all we want, but the reality is that until we get a grasp on the training required to ensure that our stops are constitutional, we're going to continue to have these kinds of issues, and it's troubling to me when you look at the data of the FIO stops, how often those stops happen without reasonable suspicion and without probable cause. With that, I just want to thank the makers for this, to step in the right direction having these kinds of conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I, Counselor Arroyo said the main thing I wanted to say, so I will just echo it to say, I think we should be really worried about pretextual stops as unconstitutional. And I think that, I think too often we end up talking about that form of policing, like, oh, you know, we're weighing the pros and the cons, when the point of constitutional rights is that they hold no matter what the pros and the cons are. And I think it's really important that all citizens of Boston be able to walk around our streets without feeling this pressure, you know, and a sort of quickening in their heart when they see a law enforcement officer. And I think that that would be true even if there weren't the racial disparities that there are, but the racial disparities, they do make it even more concerning. But I just want to circle back to the fact that the thing about rights is that they're not something that we weigh in the balance. They're something that just draw lines around what's appropriate legal behavior. And it's ironic that, I think, even thinking about how one would ban pretextual stops, it's hard to figure out what language you would use to write it down, because fundamentally, you know, the constitutional language is already there about the need for, you know, reasonable suspicion and a warrant. So I just want to stress that I think this is a really important issue. Please sign my name on, and I'm looking forward to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Braden, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Wu, and please also add the Chair. Docket 0892 will be referred to the Committee.
Madam Chair, can I make a point of clarification?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please, you have the floor.
I just wanted to ask a question through you to whoever can answer. I'm hearing the FIOs being called stop and frisk. I don't think it's the same thing. Is there anybody that can clarify that for me, or I can find out after the fact? I don't know. Just a thought and a question.
I will turn the question to the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, if she's with us. Counselor Campbell, are you able to answer that question, or can you follow up with Counselor Baker after? Thank you.
Well, yeah, I know, Hayden says hi. I'll just quickly say, it is equivalent. And so, you know, in the layman term, to someone on the street, it's stop and frisk. In our procedural process policy, it's FIOs. We can go into more detail, but for all intents and purposes, they're interchangeable, and they're the same.
I'm not sure it is. When I was involved in an FIO, I didn't see people getting frisked. It was more information that they were asking people for their names and that sort of stuff. I did not see any frisk, but.
And I will say, Counselor Baker, that may be true for your experience, but it's not true for some others. And so the terminology in some communities is stop and frisk because of the very nature in which they are handled by police officers. But can talk in more detail. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Now, just with the interruption, if people wanted to add their names, did everyone get to add their name who wanted to add their name? Madam Clerk, could you please check and make sure that Counselor Edwards and Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Arroyo are on that, Counselor Flynn, myself as the Chair, Counselor Asabi George, docket 0892 will be assigned, be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Before we move on, as folks know, we have lost one of our colleagues, and it seems that because this meeting has gone on so long on the tech side, that we have to take a brief recess and all log back in to get her on. That is what I've been told by Carrie. And so at this time, now that we have assigned that docket, we will take literally just a brief recess to re-sign in. Carrie has already sent the link to your emails, so I would really appreciate it if, once you leave this meeting, that you immediately sign back in to the meeting, looking for the link that Carrie just sent, okay? So we'll take a quick, quick recess. Video note.
I couldn't even watch the video. I was texting my crew. I'm like.
The video is livestreamed on YouTube, so you can always get it on YouTube in the future. Just to catch you up, you are next in terms of the docket. So this is, we're now on the docket of racism in the retail stores.
Okay. And is everybody back in the?
We have already finished the docket on internet access.
Oh.
That was where you.
I was, wasn't I a co-sponsor of that?
You was, you were, but we moved on. You weren't there, and so we moved on, and you weren't able to get back in. Did you need to say anything briefly on that when we introduced? I mean, it's already been assigned. If you want to say something briefly on that, you can, but really, we're on docket 0893.
Okay.
Consideration, so it's back in front of the council.
I just have a quick question. Did Flynn add me as a co-sponsor? Because I wanted to be a co-sponsor of that. That's all I need to know.
You are already an original sponsor. You didn't need to be added. So you're already an original sponsor of docket 0890. That is the internet one. So you're already, you're an original sponsor on that.
Okay, so, that's okay. I don't need to say anything. I'm going to keep the show moving.
All righty then. So when we're all on, just know that I'm coming to you first, okay? Well, I'm going to go to the clerk first, and then I'm going to come to you. And hopefully, folks are getting on here. Let's see where we are with attendance. I can't see everybody. I see, I only see you and O'Malley and Braden. Are others here?
I see a. I'm here. Counselor Campbell's here.
Flaherty's on.
I count 10 of us so far, or 11.
You see 10? I'm just going to give one second. Carrie, are we good?
Ready when you are.
My view is locked on my screen. Are you controlling that?
I am.
Yeah, can you get it out of whatever it is so I can see? Yep, there we go. Thank you. Lovely, lovely, lovely. All right, so I'm going to bring us back into session. Thank you, guys. Sorry for the technical difficulty for anyone who was watching and following along. We wanted to make sure that everyone was here. Thank you all to my colleagues for getting back on to the Zoom so quickly. We are now in our agenda, still under motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0893?
Docket 0893, Counselor Mejia offered the following order for hearing on racism in retail stores in the city of Boston.
Thank you so much. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This issue is really the intersectionality between our work as the Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights, as well as small businesses, consumer affairs, and workforce development. We were moved by the story of Natalia Fanfan, a fashion stylist with over a decade of experience, who has endured moments of discrimination and racism here in this very city. While her article was published only a month ago in the Boston Globe, this conversation has been going on for years. People have shared stories of being followed, ignored, and a 2018 poll shows that black people feel and see injustice when they are shopping among white people. No person should ever feel undermined or undervalued, and we're all tired of having these conversations over and over again with no action. We look forward to bringing together community members, small and local business owners, along with workers, to end this us versus them mentality, so that this no longer is a reality for our people. And I have to say, you know, for me, as an adult, I still, you know, when I go to TJ Maxx or when I go to different stores, I always feel like I'm being followed, and I literally have to say, are you following me? The fact that, whether they're following me or not, the fact that I walk into these spaces already feeling the fear that I'm being followed speaks volumes to the long history that we have here, not just in the city of Boston, but I think anywhere that we go. And then I think this is an opportunity for us to not just have a hearing for the sake of having a hearing, but that we can come out of this conversation with real solutions in terms of how we're going to address this issue. So I look forward to bringing the people to the table and figuring out what we can do to move the conversation along. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Bach, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Wu, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor O'Malley, please also add the Chair. Docket 0893 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Docket 0894, Madam Clerk, could you please read that?
Docket 0894, excuse me. Counselor Bach offered the following order for hearing regarding increasing public housing in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I come before you today to speak about public housing as a public good. I want to talk about what it does for our community, why we need more of it, and how we can go about adding to this vital resource here in the city of Boston. Public housing really represents, and has represented from the start in concept, a commitment to housing for all, but that's a commitment that our society has too often backed away from. We, in Boston, still house about 5% of our city in public housing, and really, in particular, a huge portion of the residents of our city who are able to stay here, who are low-income families, low-income seniors, people with disabilities. There's a lot of folks who have always called Boston home and who have built up our neighborhoods and made the city what it is, and public housing becomes the one way for them to stay here. I really want to emphasize right from the start today that often, we've been talking over the last few years about housing affordability and what level of income, different affordable housing supports. But public housing is stabilizing in a deeper way, even than the fact that it houses very low-income people. If you experience a job loss or an illness that causes you to lose your income, in public housing, as with Section 8 vouchers, your rent is adjusted to reflect that change in income. And that prevents the kind of vicious cycle where people experience a shock and it leads to family homelessness and a cycle downwards that can really disrupt our families and households. And I just want to emphasize that, because I think we've seen in this pandemic, as we've, you know, struggled to find housing for our families who are in shelter, for individuals in shelter that's safe, we've seen how much people losing their housing is the opposite of what they need in a shock, and how to have a decent society that also secures public health, we really have to cut that kind of vicious cycle off at the past. I'm proud of the fact that in Boston, we got into the public housing program really early. We built it when it was still politically popular, and as a result, public housing developments dot our city in almost every neighborhood. You know, even in a very segregated city, Boston has its public housing more evenly distributed and closer to public amenities, public transit, et cetera, than the vast majority of American cities. And in many neighborhoods today, after seeing so much gentrification in the city, it's often the only way that we're keeping people of color, in particular, in certain neighborhoods. So I think about Mission Hill that I represent, think about Charlestown, you know, think about increasingly JP, you really see public housing as this anchor that is keeping people here as the market sweeps them away. And I mention that term anchor, I think a lot about the fact that we built one of the earliest public housing developments in the country at Mariel and McCormick down in South Boston. And they built it at the very beginning of the program and used really fancy materials. There are these real iron balconies that face the ocean, and there's an anchor actually carved in those balconies, because its original name was Old Harbor. And I think about that, because when I was speaking to this council in February, I talked about the fact that the only way that you can actually have a rising tide, lift all boats, is if you anchor the boats, all of them, small and large, right, in the bay. Otherwise, folks get swept away. And it's funny to think that in February, that made a lot of sense. We were talking about Boston as a place where everything was on the rise, and so it's, okay, how do we keep people here in a rising tide? But now, in COVID-19, we're in a storm, a huge storm that is engulfing all of us. And what's interesting about that is that it's also in a storm that the only way you're going to keep all the boats in the harbor is if they're well anchored. And I think what we're really seeing is, in some ways, at a social level, everyone experiencing what was already true for so many of our families. So that vicious cycle I mentioned, needing to get cut off, I mean, right now, we're having these social conversations about how it would be crazy if because someone lost a job or because they came down with COVID, they suddenly lost their housing. And we're having these difficult conversations about the domino effect between our renters and our landlords and the banks, and how does it all connect up, and how do we press pause so that we don't have folks out in the street in a pandemic, not just for their sake, but for all of our sakes, because public health requires safe housing. But I just want to lift up that that has always been true, that connectedness, and actually the investment that we should all have in making sure that everyone is safely and stably housed. So to me, that means that now that we sort of have that collective insight, we need to change the public mood music around public housing. For decades nationwide, there's been a kind of denigration of public housing as a vestige of the past, something that is inevitably going to fade away, and that disinvestment's been formalized on a federal level, with capital funds dwindling to almost nothing, and with an amendment that was passed in 1999 called Faircloth Amendment, that literally said that no city or town in America shall build any more public housing units than what it has on this day. And so that was really an announcement that the federal government was not going to promote the further growth of this program. And that amendment continues to prevent increases in public housing for most municipalities nationwide. And you see, even as you see wait lists growing, I mean, our own wait list here in the city of Boston, just in the last few years, has increased from 40,000 to 50,000 families. It's just, it's an expression of need that's really overwhelming, and the idea that we've sort of drawn a line in the sand nationally and said we won't create any more of this resource is, to my mind, unconscionable. But in Boston, we have a really interesting opportunity. Because Boston did a lot of de-densification of its public housing, AKA these redevelopments we did that replaced the units, but often put fewer public housing units back in the early 2000s, sometimes because we were adding mixed income, you know, higher-income units into the mix, sometimes just because we were changing the type of housing stock to make it less dense, because of that, we in Boston are actually under our Faircloth limit. So we would be entitled by the federal program to have 12,086 public housing units, and we only have 9,622, which means that in Boston, we could add up to 2,464, so 2,400 public housing units. And for every one of those that we added today, we would be immediately entitled to the federal operating subsidy to support them. So it puts us in a unique moment, and it means that whereas down in Congress, we've got people like Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez fighting to lift that, fighting to lift that amendment, here we don't have to wait for DC and lifting the amendment, we could act now. And we could act in creative ways. We could think about adding new public housing units on existing public housing sites, but we could also think about vacant lots. We could think about using this subsidy to deepen the affordability of blocks of our IDP units. We could add some of these in a mixed income context, where we're also adding units that are middle income and market. We could do any number of things, but we have tried, we have had such a hard time as a city, adding the kind of deep affordability that public housing provides. as a city adding the kind of deep affordability that public housing provides. And also, as I mentioned, that stabilization that public housing provides of knowing not just, oh, I can afford this if I only make 30% of area median income, but also, I'm not going to lose my home if I lose my job. Because when we focus on, you know, IDP and whether the 70% is the right threshold, what we don't talk about a lot is that someone might meet that threshold, it might work for them, and then they're just a job loss away from no longer being able to make that threshold. And without the federal subsidy, you don't have a backstop against that. So to me, I think it's time for us to be using this untapped federal resource. Now, that raises the question of why haven't we done this already? And really, there are two conditions that need to change. And one is a policy condition that already has changed recently, and one is a question of political will. So on the policy side, the reason that people have not been racing to increase the number of public housing units is because the federal government doesn't send you enough money per unit for public housing units to really be sustainable, for you to put the, and especially for you to put the money away to replace a roof when it breaks, right? And so it's hard for the city to sign up for something that isn't going to be financially sustainable. And certainly, what we don't want is our most vulnerable folks housed in places that are in a state of disrepair. Recently, however, just in the last few years, the federal government created a program called the Rental Assistance Demonstration Project, RAD, which lets you convert your public housing to a platform that actually sends you more money per month, per unit, and really lets you put that kind of replacement reserve aside or something like the roof. Now, the funny thing is, this program was created as a way of privatizing public housing. It was created as a way of giving private actors the opportunity to own it. But there's nothing that prevents a housing authority from switching its public housing units over onto RAD and then continuing to own them publicly and taking advantage of the greater subsidy. So there's really, there's a new opportunity there that we can take full advantage of as a city. Now, the second condition that comes down to political will is that even if you get that additional funding that makes these units sustainable for the long term from a maintenance perspective, it still doesn't cover the kind of upfront money that you need to build or buy these units. And I say build or buy because I also think there's a world in which we use the city's AOP program, Acquisition Opportunity, to think about, you know, apartment buildings that we could convert this way and keep deep affordability. I think there's a lot of options on the table. But you're not getting enough money from these units to finance in advance a big initial payment. And so you need that upfront capital. And I think the thing that I hope is changing and that I think that this body needs to help make change is the political will to put that capital upfront, to say, hey, public housing is public infrastructure. It's a, and a deep investment in our public health as a city. And so what are the types of ways we could get that money? Well, there's two home rule petitions that this council has sent up to the State House that are there right now. There's the IDP linkage one, which is House 4115, and the transfer fee, which is House 4514. And we've just gotten word in the midst of this meeting that the House and Senate are going to extend formal session, which means that there is more time to do important work in the coming months. And some of that important work would be giving Boston the resources that we need to really make these transformative investments in housing. The other thing we can do is increase our own city capital spending in the direction of housing. And a really important step on that front has been that for the last two years, for the first time, we've included support for public housing renovation in our city capital budget. So $5 million this year to support senior housing at the BHA and $30 million the prior year to support the transformation at Charlestown. So I think we've been laying the groundwork to take seriously the idea that this too is an investment in public community infrastructure, especially in a context in which the public could continue to own and operate these units. I also want to call out that I think it would be consistent with the call in the President's letter related to a black and brown agenda for Boston to increase our resources for housing in Boston by $300 million. The only way you're going to get to a number like that is a serious shift in our capital budget. Some of that money needs to be for homeownership, for middle-income housing, but some of that money can be about these anchors, about keeping low-income people, seniors, folks with disabilities, as I said, the people who have built our city here in it, and to really scale up those resources. And it scaled them up all over the city. The last thing I want to say on this is that I represent the only district in the council that doesn't have any traditional public housing. It does have a couple of converted public housing developments, so Mission Main being the largest of them. But I think that this resource also offers us the opportunity to build on vacant lots, to build above public assets, and to think about ways, as a complement to the Fair Housing Zoning Amendment that we're working on, to do new affordable creation that really spreads those opportunities to live in Boston across all of our city neighborhoods. And so I also think that this kind of investment can be a part of really affirmatively furthering fair housing in our city, which, at a time when, again, just while we've been having this meeting, the President has been, you know, explicitly saying that the suburbs should be happy to pull up the drawbridge to low-income people, to multifamily housing, to people of color, frankly. You know, I think it's really important for Boston to model what it would look to do just the opposite. And I think this is a complicated road and a heavy lift in terms of resources, but it's exactly the kind of work that we're elected to do. And so I, in the coming months, am going to be pushing for the political will to make it so. So thank you, and thank you, Madam President, for your indulgence.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the maker for not just her thoughtfulness in writing this hearing order that's before us today, but in her very thorough report out or description of why this is so important. My time on the council, I've certainly learned and realized that the feds have walked away from public housing. And we think about, especially our families experiencing homelessness, and our families on the brink of experiencing homelessness, those so instably housed, that public housing is the asset that we need the most of. And when we have now 50,000 families on waitlists to get to that housing, we have a tremendous problem on our hands. And again, the feds have been irresponsible in their work and have left us to pick the pieces up. And we have been, in many ways, irresponsible in continuing to promote public housing, knowing the waitlists have been so incredibly long. So a tremendous, a significant, an unimaginable amount of money needs to be invested in this work. This is an opportunity to do this for our neighbors, for our friends, for our families who are either experiencing homelessness or will soon. Public housing is the answer, and it's where we need to invest our dollars. So I wholeheartedly sign on to this and look forward to the amount of work that is ahead that's so important for us to be focused on. I thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the maker.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Bach for this very timely order. As the first person in my family to buy a house and get my mom out of significant housing, for me, this is something that is near and dear. And actually, one of our staffers currently lives in government housing and another recently had to complete moving because their landlord threatened to increase their rent in the middle of this pandemic. So needless to say, that housing is something that is impacting us all. The need for public affordable housing is crucial in this city like Boston. I'm not sure if you guys recently learned, but we were, I think, the top three in the nation as it relates to being displaced. And so I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done in this area. And we do not just need to just build more affordable public housing for the sake of just building it. I think we have an opportunity to reimagine what public housing looks like. Public housing should not just be about a space that people have to live in, it should also be a space that people actually want to live in. We are really looking forward to this conversation and hope to see people living the realities represented in this discussion and look forward to this conversation and making sure that when we're planning, that it's not just in Dorchester, Roxbury, and Mattapan, but that we are looking at making sure that public housing exists in the seaports and other areas. I think that, you know, we have a way of redlining and segregating low-income communities. And so Counselor Bach, as we talk about public housing, I just want to really make sure that we're being really equitable in terms of the distribution of where these housing developments land.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please add my name. Obviously, always great to hear about the Old Habba Village where I was born and raised and where my mother was. The Old Habba was an anchor for my grandmother. After she had lost her husband, my grandfather, my mother, and her brother were very young. And the community within the Old Habba Village that rallied around my mother and a brother and my grandmother, at a time when my grandmother would have to work nights cleaning the buildings downtown, particularly the downtown offices and courthouses. So that was a tremendous resource for my family. And I think combined between myself, my mother, and grandmother, we have about 100 years collectively at the Old Habba Village down in Mary Ellen McCormick. So it's nice to hear Counselor Bach reference projects that I go up in. That said, obviously, the waiting lists are ridiculously long, and not a week goes by, we're not getting calls, all of us getting calls regularly from folks that are on these lists trying to get themselves or their loved ones in to public housing. So because of this huge waiting list, there's an enormous need for a more deeply affordable housing stock. Arguably, some will argue that Boston's a land poor city. We can also point to missed opportunities, particularly, Counselor Flynn and I can speak to the South Boston waterfront, feels more like you're in New York City than you do in Boston. And that was the previous administration, to put the fault where it lies. And there was the deals that were made down there with developers, and there was also the linkage and mitigation money that were spread across the city as opposed to investing and making that really feel like, you know, part of the South Boston community. So that said, look forward to an expedited hearing, and I look forward to working with my colleagues and other partners from the administration to identify ways where we can create more public housing to meet the needs and the demands that we're hearing on a regular basis. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for responding.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really applaud Counselor Bach for this initiative and her leadership in this area. I am so excited with this proposal. I realize it's a big lift, a heavy lift, but it's really important to have the conversation. You may have read last week that there was a piece in The Globe about Alston Brighton. Our local CDC has a 17,000 waitlist for affordable housing in our district. It is, people, it's just really, really tough, and especially for folks with families and folks with disabilities and our elders. And we've seen increasing pressure displacement, on displacement of these folks. And it's really important that they're able to stay in all of our neighborhoods across the city. So count me in, I want to be a robust and enthusiastic advocate and supporter of your work, and I look forward to the conversation. Thank you so much. And please add my name.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. I just quickly want to thank the maker for bringing forth a hearing order in the conversation. I want to echo Counselor Mejia's point, too, that we obviously have to keep in mind the pattern and history of segregation with respect to where we place our housing, and particularly, public housing. But one of the points I also wanted to raise up, and I frequently talk about, is, you know, I have Franklin Field, Franklin South in my district, and some of those units and buildings haven't been touched or renovated in 30 years. And it is a battle to get resources to change that. And I have many, have had many conversations with folks, and some incredible black leaders, actually, and we were in conversation with the housing authority on renovating those buildings. But I think we've missed some real opportunities to take some resources from other large development projects and really be intentional around public housing in certain neighborhoods. So as we're wanting to grow money to produce new units and new public housing, which I think is important, we also have to talk about the existing housing stock of public housing in certain communities that really need immediate work. And usually, these are the sites of incredible poverty, incredible violence, and every, all the root causes, as you can imagine, that lead to incidents of violence. So hopefully, this is a part of that conversation, too. I thank you, Counselor Bach, for your leadership, and please add my name. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Please show a physical hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Royo, Counselor Flynn, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Asabi George, and please also add the Chair. Docket 0894 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. I will now turn the chair over to the Vice President, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket number 00895 into the record?
Docket 0895, Counselor Edwards and Janey offered the following ordinance amending CBC Chapter 8-13, establishing the equitable regulations of the cannabis industry in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity to really continue the conversation that we, that Counselor Janey started and is continuing to have about setting up this industry, this incredible economic opportunity in cannabis in the most equitable way possible. And that isn't going to happen naturally, is what we have been, what we have seen and what we've been reminded about consistently. The most recent reminder being the regulations that came out from the BCB, from the Boston Cannabis Board. Unfortunately, the regulations not only missed the point of the entire equitable analysis, but also set people up, set us up as a city to be less equitable. And that, as a result, I have proposed several amendments to correct their interpretation or actually to make, to bring them back to the original interpretation of the cannabis ordinance that Counselor Janey introduced, and to actually make sure that we root out the inequities right now. The fact of the matter is, we are, how we set this up and how we run right now is going to either determine whether we're going to be in the same situation with liquor licenses or if we're going to lead the way. If Mayor Walsh, when he said that we would be the most equitable city when it comes to cannabis, then we need to make these changes right now before the board continues on this route that is going to make us less equitable. Despite many good things that are in the regulations, the whole point of the regulations and the whole point of the municipal process is to get an HCA, a Host Community Agreement. The way the regulations are set up right now, after all the song and dance, after all the beautiful points, after all the discussion, and after all the beautiful, board does everything that they can do, they will give a license. That license is as good as a piece of paper it's written on. The state looks to the HCA. And I believe in a discussion with the Council President Janey, the goal was to make the HCA part of a public process where we could understand what is being negotiated, part of a timeline, and part of a clear understanding that the board would be approving those HCAs. None of that is happening. Right now, the way the regulation is set up, we will have a community, person applies within six months, they have a community meeting. After that, after those six months, they are then going to the board. The board will do all the things that it's going to do. And then ultimately, after they approve a license, it sits on the desk of the same, the same desk where it sits now, waiting for an HCA. With no points, no transparency, no timeline, and no clarity as to when that HCA will be given, that's exactly where we are right now. If I sound frustrated, it's because I am, because it's been the push of Counselor Janey to get this done, it's been the push to get the board even started, it's been the push to get them to get the regs out. And those pushes came from this body to make us more equitable. So again, instead, we're going to have to push even further with these amendments. The First Amendment would make the HCA part of the package that comes before the board. And it would change, it would actually set up a timeline so that when people are going to invest their entire life savings, their entire life, and be dedicated to a process, they understand when it's going to begin and when it's going to end. And if they do not win or they do not get what they want, this due process that we're putting in this amendment would give them an appeal process. Ultimately, the application would be submitted, you would still have within six months your community meeting, and then after that meeting, the city will begin to negotiate the HCA. Within 10 days, they will have negotiated the HCA, haven't executed it yet. They will then submit the HCA, along with all the other evidence that they must, as well as the security plan, by the way, which suddenly is supposed to happen, I guess, after all this is done. Everything- which suddenly is supposed to happen, I guess, after all this is done. Everything comes before the board one time. The board then approves or doesn't approve that applicant. And that is it. And that's when the HCA is executed. That is crucial. We shouldn't have several stops or wondering, or any more lack of clarity or lack of transparency about this process. Beginning and end, the regulations should have outlined how we're going to end this and push people through this process in the most equitable way possible. This amendment corrects that. The other amendment, and this is where I spoke, I spoke specifically to how this sets us up to be less equal. I am so happy that we have the one-to-one ratio. What I tried to warn the board about is the fact that that one-to-one ratio makes no sense if you're taking brick and mortar buildings and dispensaries and putting them on a one-to-one ratio with delivery services. Delivery services cost less to create, are likely to have entrepreneurs, people of color in that business, because it's easier to set up a delivery business. What is going to happen, what has happened in East Boston, is a brick and mortar predominantly non-equitable applicant dispensary will turn around and say, hey, I got these nice kids from Mattapan, I got these nice kids from Roxbury, they're going to deliver for me. One-to-one. We're good to go. I'm, of course, infuriated by that thought, as I'm sure many of my colleagues are. The fact that we would be making sure that the non-equity, equity applicants who are going to be predominantly white, who are going to be able to get the capital, who are going to have non-equity setups in their ownership structure, will make sure that they have black and brown men and women delivering for them. And we're going to call that equity. We do not call that equity as the city of Boston. What I suggested in the letter to them, what I'm suggesting in this amendment, is that we have the one-to-one analysis based on the type of service you are providing. So brick and mortars are compared to each other, delivery services are compared to each other for the one-to-one access. Do not cross, because we, what it takes to establish different things is, they're two different worlds. The same thing when it comes to the fees. Why are delivery services paying the same fees as brick and mortars? That makes no sense. We should have a different fee structure that is less than the brick and mortars for not only delivery services, but let's be clear, this industry is going to grow. We're going to have eventually Eden Industries, we're going to have so many different things. And our regulations should be set up to make sure that the analysis for equity is constant and consistent. It is not right now. If the regulations continue as they are, and these amendments aren't passed, and these improvements aren't implemented, we will have, number one, a whole bunch of song and dance immenstrality to get a license that sits on the desk of somebody and not knowing when that person will get an HCA. Offensive. Not only that, we will then be setting it ourselves up and allowing for a one-to-one analysis where folks with the most money, most capital are continuing to hold that. And the people who've been most burdened by the war on drugs will be their delivery people or their dealers. That's disgusting. So I'm asking my colleagues to implement these fixes to the regulations, because I was so disappointed to see that the board couldn't understand the mission, the heart, and the goal of the ordinance that was passed. So I submit this, and I hope that we will be able to get to a truly equitable cannabis industry in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Edwards. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. Councilor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And I want to start by thanking my sister-in-service and friend and colleague, Councilor Edwards, who has been very involved from the very beginning on this issue, was very helpful and instrumental as I shepherded the original ordinance through the council and getting that passed, and has been a great, strong advocate on all things equity relating to this industry. And let me say that again, equity. Equity, clarity, transparency, and accountability. Equity, clarity, transparency, and accountability. Those are the cornerstones that we are trying to put forth with the ordinance, and we need for the Boston Cannabis Board to also be grounded in those values. And so I share the concerns, and I'm seeing a message on my laptop that my internet is unstable. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I will be brief. I don't know what that message is about. I don't want to sound like Darth Vader or something up here. But these issues are really important. I need not remind folks that in 2016, so four years ago, is when the law was passed here, when voters in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts decided to legalize. And it took, you know, almost that full four years before Boston even saw its first recreational shop open. Unfortunately, that shop had to close to COVID, et cetera. We know the history here in our city. We know that if we don't act, that we will continue to perpetuate the status quo, and we know who the status quo will benefit. It will benefit large companies, mostly from outside of our area, certainly outside of the city of Boston, maybe outside of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They'll be large, they'll be largely white. It will not be the local entrepreneurs from our neighborhoods who have been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. And so there is more work to be done in this industry. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue to lead in this space and to work with Councilor Edwards and all of you, ensuring that the intentions around the ordinance that we passed together are being realized. And so I would highlight, first and foremost, around the types of licenses. Clearly, the types of, there are going to be several different types of licenses, from social consumption to the dispensaries, which we're talking about now, delivery. And the goal was never to say just half of licenses, all licenses are going to go to equity applicants. It is looking at each type of license. That's what we need to do. Otherwise, we will see those with the resources, the capital to do so, they'll have the big dispensaries. And let's be real, let's be real clear, the dispensaries is where the real action is. That's where the money, the cultivators, the dispensaries, those who can move large amounts, that's where the money is. Those who can deliver, those who might work at a dispensary, it's not the same type of opportunity. And so if we're talking about equity, clearly, we're talking about half of the delivery licenses being equity to non-equity, half of social consumption being equity to non-equity, half of the dispensary, et cetera, et cetera. And if that isn't playing out in the regs, we need, our responsibility as a council is to make crystal clear what it is that we're talking about, so that we don't end up with a lopsided system where all the delivery, which is a lower barrier to entry, and so hopefully more folks can get into it, but the opportunity to earn and have a successful business and build generational wealth is going to be a lot less than those who are getting into the dispensary space. And so we need equity throughout, throughout the system. And so that's very important. Making sure that all of the types of checks and balances that we want to see for any kind of process in Boston, that means establishing the conflict of interest protections, making sure that there is a clear timeline. To the other point that you heard, a lot of passion from my colleague, Councilor Edwards, around the deliberation, always intended. That's why we fought to get the board, so that we could have public deliberation as to whether or not this particular company is great for this particular neighborhood and this site, and that's the right business, and everyone's on board. But that conversation is supposed to happen in a public way. That is the point of the board, for public deliberation, so that the entrepreneurs themselves, as well as residents who have questions and even concerns, have that opportunity to weigh in. So we need to make sure that the deliberation is happening at the board level, and that that is where the decisions are being made and where the HCA would be then issued to the company. So I wanted to highlight those points, obviously, fee structures and making sure that there are distinctions between the types of licenses, very important as well. So I look forward to having, hopefully, an expedited hearing, more conversation. I want to just say that timing is of the essence here. In Boston, we have one. There are several entrepreneurs, though, that are in the queue, and hopefully, will be getting through. The longer this goes on, the more we will see companies, before they even open up their doors, closing. People, so Councilor Edwards and I, we've been on this council just two and a half years. There are folks who have started putting their flag in the sand, raising money, getting investors, having a lease since before that. So people are running out of money. The last thing that I will say is how critically important it is that we get this right. It is important that we continue to come back, have this conversation, make sure that the intention around equity, around clarity, around accountability, and transparency is at the forefront. If we don't get it right in the beginning, then we will be having to come back years later and discuss why we haven't moved with the $8 median net worth for black households in Boston and a quarter of a million dollars for white households. I don't want to keep having that conversation. I want us not to move the needle, I want us to change the record. Okay? This, this, this record is all scratched. We can't just move the needle. We got to change it. And the way that we change it is we stay on top of it, and we make sure that the true intentions around the ordinance and equity being at the forefront is truly realized in this industry and in all industries in our city. So again, thank you for your partnership. I thank all of you for your work. I certainly want to shout out all the entrepreneurs in this space and all the advocates in this space, and invite them in as we have this hearing to have the conversation about how we move this forward. So thank you for that, Mr. Vice President, and all my colleagues.
Thank you, Madam President. Would anyone else like to speak on this docket? Seeing and hearing none, would anyone like to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add the District Counselor from Beacon Hill. Please add the District Counselor from Alston Brighton. Please add the At-Large Counselor from Dorchester. Please add the other At-Large Counselor from Dorchester. Please add the At-Large Counselor from Rosendale. Please add the District Counselor from Mattapan. Please add the District Counselor from Hyde Park. Please add the Chair. And seeing no one else, oh, excuse me, Michael, Councilor Flaherty, would you like to add your name? Or did you want to?
Yes, that's correct.
And please add the At-Large Counselor from South Boston as well. And I'm sorry, Councilor Mejia, you want to speak? I know we added your name. Okay, so you are good. Great. And Councilor Flynn, please add the District Counselor from South Boston as well. We bet everybody. Docket 0895 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
And you signed on.
That is correct, Madam Clerk. Please add the Chair as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Madam Clerk, if you could read docket 0896.
Docket 0896, Councilor Bach and Edwards offer the following resolution in support of an act to guarantee tenants' right of first refusal. House Bill 1260 and Tenner Bill 786.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Bach. Councilor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act, which would be a sort of right of first refusal for tenants when a large building goes up for sale, is a really critical tool in our housing arsenal, and I think has only become a more potentially useful one as you think about the economic crisis we're in and the risk that large buildings like that will go into foreclosure or be put up for sale. And it's a really important moment for this legislation at the State House. So this item was actually included in the House's side of the Economic Development Bill earlier this week. And that means that it has a real chance of passing at conference. The question of whether it's going to appear in the Senate bill is being decided today. But regardless, it's going to go to the Economic Development Conference. And, you know, there's the Mass Association of Housing Cooperatives and a huge coalition of folks have been pushing for a long time for this common sense opportunity. It gives tenants the right to get together to buy their building at market value. It doesn't, doesn't buy it down from market, unfortunately. But, but it means that it lets them intervene in that sale to keep the place that they know and love as a home. And it also creates the opportunity to partner with the city or a nonprofit to make that permanently affordable. So if, for instance, the tenants can't come with all the money, but there's a public or private actor that can step in and help secure it for long-term affordability, this makes that an option. So I'm really grateful. Chairman Aaron Mikulowicz up at the House put it in the Economic Development Bill on Monday. And, and I think, you know, it's really a critical moment for advocacy on the right of first refusal. And, and we have a window right now as the Boston City Council to express our strong support and push this forward to passage in this session. So I would urge my fellow counselors to join me and Councilor Edwards, and we'll be looking for a motion to suspend and pass today. And I just want to thank Councilor Edwards as well, who I know will speak next, just for her relentless leadership on this issue, and in general, on the kinds of, the kinds of moves that would give us a more democratic ownership society, right? A society where everything is not held by the few. And I think tenant right of first refusal is a real, is a real way of shifting things towards, towards housing cooperatives and towards that more democratic capital holding in general. So I hope everyone will support this today. Thanks so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Edwards. Councilor Edwards, you have the floor.
Very much. First, thank you, Councilor Bach, for including me on this resolution. Tenant opportunity to purchase at market rate, when and only if the person chooses to sell their home. These are the important things to remember. This is not forcing a sale. If you're not selling your house, you're not selling your house. These, this opportunity to purchase is also assuring that people who honestly, who lived in Boston, who are landlords in some of our larger buildings, will continue to make sure that neighborhoods stay neighborhoods. A lot of them do struggle with, if I'm going to sell, I have to sell to a big developer or sell to somebody else who's going to clear out this entire building, and my tenants, my good paying and loyal tenants will be gone. This is an opportunity for them to still get the market rate, but for their tenants to be able to bid and work with and purchase the building. It makes sense. It's also something that when, when and if this, no, when it passes, I should say, because we are all hopeful it does, the city of Boston, it's an opportunity, I believe this is a local option. So it will allow for us to construct what it looks like here in Boston. So we still have a crack at making sure this makes sense. And one of the things we're going to definitely have to look at is the funding that helps to support it. But until then, we're not looking at anything. And we're not going to be able to deal with the buildings that are cleared out, for example, for condo conversions, unless we pass and support TOPA. I'm beyond excited. There's plenty of things in the economic bill. We've already passed a resolution for the Homes Act today. I hope my colleagues will join us in passing a resolution for the TOPA to make sure that we are able to allow tenants to even compete. The worst thing is that a lot of tenants don't even know their building's for sale. This would at least give them notice and at least allow them to compete. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilor Bach and Edwards, for all your work we have done to make housing more affordable and fair for everyone. The Act to Guarantee Tenant's Right to First Refusal is an important piece of legislation that needs our support. But we also need to talk about expanding what a right to first refusal should look like. It's one thing to offer a tenant the opportunity to buy their unit, but it's another issue entirely when it comes to making sure that that unit is an, is an affordable one in the first place. In our office, we have been intentional about creating systems that help us hold ourselves accountable to the people that we serve. But these systems only work because they were designed with us in mind. We need to apply that same sense of perspective to a tenant's right to first refusal, not just give them an opportunity to buy their unit, but actually creating a pathway for affordable homeownership. We fully support this resolution, and we can, we are committed to doing the work to strengthen tenant rights. And thank you, Councilor Bach and Edwards, for always going hard on this issue.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please add my name in support of this resolution. It's incredibly important at this moment in time, and it's a very, very important piece of the puzzle in terms of housing stability, increasing housing stability in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Councilor Flynn, Councilor Sabi George, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Wu, and please also add the Chair. I think that is, and Councilor Royal. Did I get everyone? Wonderful. Councilors Bach and Edwards seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0896. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it. And docket 0896 has been
And docket 0896 has been adopted. We'll move on.
Madam President, please, Madam President, please add my name. I asked, I had my hand raised.
I'm so sorry, we didn't see you there.
Same here, sorry, Madam President.
Madam Clerk, if you could please add, before we move on, Counselors Kim and Counselor Flaherty.
Flaherty.
Did I get everyone?
We did.
Excellent. Now we'll move on to docket 0897.
Docket 0897, Counselors Asabi George and Wu offer the following resolution requesting the MBTA to expand fair free service to essential workers.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George.
Thank you, Madam President. And first, thanks to Counselor Wu for joining me on this resolution. Two weeks ago, I sent a letter to the MBTA General Manager, Steve Poftek, urging him to consider extending free fair or fair free service to our essential workers as they were moving to fare collection once again. It is clear that we wouldn't be in Phase 3 without the tireless and arduous work of our healthcare, grocery store, sanitation, and transportation workers. On numerous occasions, we have lifted them up as heroes and thanked them for hanging in while they became unexpectedly frontline workers. Now that our city is more open than it was in the spring, the MBTA has resumed that fare collection. The MBTA is a longstanding practice of providing fair free service to our first responders. I ask that this body suspend the rules and pass this resolution asking the MBTA to extend the fair free service to all of our essential workers as a thanks for the work that they have done and continue to do to keep us safe and alive during this pandemic. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Asabi George for inviting me to partner on this. I couldn't agree more that we need to understand and respect the, how fundamental our essential workers now, how fundamental public transit is and transit justice. The MBTA's move to stop fare collection right when the pandemic hit for buses and to allow residents to enter through the rear doors to protect the drivers really was a lifeline and public health protection. So that has been reversed as of last week. You know, there are many things I could say on that, but I very much agree that at the very, very, very least, our essential workers should continue to benefit from the transit that is necessary for them to do their jobs and continue to save lives.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Flynn, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Mahia. Please also add the Chair. I think, is this Michael, Counselor Flaherty?
Yes, that's correct. That's my hand. Please add my name.
And Counselor Arroyo. And you have the Chair. I think that's everyone, yes?
Counselor Edwards.
Counselor Ed, is she with us? I don't see Counselor Edwards.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure, because I know she's usually.
Okay. So Counselor Asabi George and Wu seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0897. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of you say nay? The ayes have it and docket 0897 has been adopted. We will move on to docket 0898.
Docket 0898, Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution in support of the No Ban Act.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. The National Origin-Based Antidiscrimination for Nonimmigrants Act, or the No Ban Act, was introduced last spring in response to the President's executive order creating a travel ban barring visitors from seven majority Muslim countries. The ban was a campaign issued based in outright bigotry and not real concerns for the well-being of our country or our global partners. The House of Representatives this past week passed the No Ban Act, which would repeal the executive order and prevent future xenophobic travel bans. This bill needs to pass in the Senate, in the Senate next. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution, urging the Senate to move swiftly and pass the No Ban Act as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name to this resolution? Show of physical hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Flynn, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Wu, please also add the Chair. I think, did I get everyone? Excellent. Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0898. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We oppose, nay. The ayes have it and docket 0898 has been adopted. Okay, I am glad we turn the Chair back over to Counselor O'Malley, the Vice Chair of the body. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, please read docket, please, please, docket 0899 before.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket 0899, Counselors Wu and Janey offer the following resolution, Supporting the Freedom to Move Act.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the At-Large Counselor from Rosendale. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you too, Madam President, for partnering on this. This is a little bit delayed now because the federal act was introduced just after the filing deadline for our council meeting a few weeks ago. So ideally, it would have been then, but we wanted to make sure not to have a late file, so we're filing it now and that's why I'm on my bus theme today. This act is a bill proposed by our Congresswoman, Ayanna Pressley, along with our Senator Ed Markey, to create federal funding, to make a substantial amount of federal funding available for local transit organizations to offer fair free service and to increase service from a lens of equity. So that would mean that we would have the ability in Boston and in Massachusetts to expand fair free service across buses and potentially beyond that for everyone, including our first responders and essential workers, including our young people, our seniors, every working family and every person in Massachusetts that is under the MBTA's umbrella. We are with this act, seeking to codify the fact that public transportation is a public good, everyone benefits, the more people ride transit, even if you're not directly on those trains and buses. And so we need to start treating it that way and funding it that way. Thank you so much. Oh, I would like to ask for, move for suspension and a suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I am so proud to co-sponsor this resolution along with Counselor Wu, who is situated in Newbyan Square at the Newbyan Bus Station. Good to see you there. Glad to partner with you on this issue and so many others. Certainly want to shout out our former colleague, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley and Senator Markey for sponsoring the Freedom to Move Act. As we know, here in the city of Boston, many residents rely on the MBTA. I'm certainly one of them. But many of our residents who are Black and Brown rely heavily on the MBTA. And this is an economic justice issue for them. I've said it before, you've heard this data point before, but Black people spend 64 more hours, 64 more hours than other folks commuting because of unreliable buses, lack of access to an actual T-stop, and these issues are just exacerbated by racism. And so if we're serious about tackling all of the issues that we've been talking about on this council, not just since George Floyd's murder, but really before, I know many of us have had a very racial justice kind of centering in our work. If we're serious about that, though, we have to tackle it at all fronts and even things that are considered state issues like the T. This fund is so important, this fund, as you know, in the letter that was highlighted earlier, the Black and Brown Agenda Letter, we talk about a fund to provide free buses in our community, and this could certainly help with that. This, again, is an economic justice issue. It is about how people get to and from work, how they get to and from their doctor's appointments and to school and other places that they need to go. And we have to make sure that we don't have barriers to that kind of access. We're really talking about equitable access. So grateful to partner on this and seek suspension of the rules and adoption of this docket. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from Beacon Hill. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to commend the makers and say, I think this is such an important piece of legislation and also it's so important to do exactly as Counselor Wu said, to really emphasize that public transit is a public good. I think, to me, it connects a lot. Obviously, I was speaking about public housing earlier in this meeting. And I think in general, we have this spectrum of how we think about public goods in our society, and we all know that the public library is for all of us, even if we go a year without checking out a book from it. But when we start thinking about public transportation, we too often start thinking about it in terms of user fees and, oh, it benefits the people who are literally riding, as opposed to acknowledging not just that that takes those people off of roads for folks who aren't riding, but more importantly, that the kind of value that we get from being a society where people can move around, where they can have unexpected interactions, where they can use all of our civic treasures and get to a job, get to work. I mean, the value of that capacity for mobility is something that we can't put a price on. And it's the same as the way that, you know, the value of people having stable housing creates public health for all of us, creates a more decent and flourishing society. And I just think that everything we can do to move the needle towards thinking about those things, the way that we think about our public roads, our public libraries, our public parks, is just really important. And so I'm glad, glad to see this body picking this up. And please add my name. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Would anybody else like to speak on docket 0899? Not seeing any blue hands. Would any counselors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add the District Counselor from Alston Brighton, please add the District Counselor from South Boston, please add the senior at-large counsel from Dorchester, please add the junior at-large counsel from Dorchester, please add the District Counselor from Mattapan, please add the at-large counsel from South Boston. Please add my name, Madam Clerk. And not seeing anyone else looking to add their name. The counselors Wu and Janey have called for a suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 089.
Counselor Arroyo, I'm sorry, I think Counselor Arroyo had his hand up also.
I apologize. Would you like to speak or add your name, Counselor Arroyo?
My name, thank you.
Apologies for that. Please add the District Counselor from Hyde Park in Rosendale as an original co-sponsor as well. The Chair now, before the body, the call from Counselor Janey for the suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0899. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is adopted.
Mr. Vice President, would you continue with the next docket?
I will. Apologies, Madam President.
No worries.
Madam Clerk, would you please place before the body docket 0900?
Docket 0900, Counselors Flynn and Campbell offer the following resolution, celebrating the centennial adoption of the 19th Amendment, granting women's right to vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Chair O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, could I add Counsel President Janey as a third original co-sponsor of this resolution?
Counselor Flynn has called for Counsel's suspension of the rules and adding Counsel Janey as the original co-sponsor of this resolution. Seeing no objection, Counsel, the Counsel President is hereby added. Please proceed, Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. I want to say thank you to Counselors Campbell and Janey for their partnership on this resolution. I also want to recognize the work of Suffrage 100 MA. It's chaired by our friend Freddie Kay, who we've worked with in the past, who's a wonderful, wonderful person. That's an organization that was formed to recognize this centennial, educate the public about the work of woman suffragists. We are filing this resolution to recognize the centennial adoption of the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. The 19th Amendment was added to the U.S. Constitution on August 26, 1920. This year marks the 100th anniversary of this monumental act. Since the mid-1800s, women suffragists had worked tirelessly for decades to advocate for women's right to vote. Activists such as Susan B. Anthony, Sojourner Truth, Lucy Stone, Josephine St. Pierre Ruffin, Maria Baldwin, Sarah Parker Redmond, and many others raised public awareness and lobbied the government to grant women the right to vote. African-American women suffragists worked tirelessly to advocate the 19th Amendment as well. Even as Jim Crow laws in the South prevented African-American men from voting, it would prevent African-American women from voting as well. Massachusetts was a big part of the suffrage movement also. In February of 1990, a group of women were arrested for protesting President Wilson on his visit to the Massachusetts State House and to lobby him to put pressure on the U.S. Senate to pass the 19th Amendment. It would be the last suffragist shield of the seven decades-long movement here in the United States. As we recognize this important date, it is important to recognize the work, but more importantly, the sacrifices of women suffragists here in Boston and across the country by celebrating their achievements. We also need to recognize this achievement by voting and protecting voting rights here in Boston and across the country. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Flynn. The Chair now recognizes the District Court Counsel, the Counsel from Mattapan. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and of course, thank you to Counselors Flynn and Janey for the partnership here. And he acknowledged our dear friend Freddie Kay for her leadership with respect to this issue and this movement in making sure that all those who were invited to participate and celebrate this centennial were diverse and representative of the city of Boston as well as the Commonwealth. And so really appreciate her intentionality of creating a space that looked diverse when celebrating this event that she did. One of the events was at Faneuil Hall. But more importantly, for being very intentional, acknowledging the history that women, particularly Black women, played in ensuring that we have the right to vote. And I think, you know, Counselor Flynn summed up the history well, but it would be, we obviously have to acknowledge the time period in which we're in today. We wouldn't be sitting in these seats, not just obviously voting, but running for office if these women didn't sort of wage the battle that took decades for this amendment to pass. And we obviously are celebrating a historical moment in the city of Boston with the first majority woman council led by our Madam President. And so it's an exciting time to celebrate this moment, but also to look forward. And when we are at moments doubtful of whether or not our elected leadership will truly reflect the demographics of the city of Boston, whether it be more women and more people of color, we can reflect on the stories of all these incredible women who came before us to pave the way. And I just want to, I just want to quickly sort of speak to, not only were there events planned at Faneuil Hall and downtown, and I want to raise up Freddie Kay again, because oftentimes, in whether it's documentaries that you're seeing right now on television or other spaces, you, it is, you miss the mark when you don't talk about women of color in particular. And the various struggles that they had to endure in order to participate in this movement. Some wanted to exclude them, some didn't want to give them their rights, were willing to sort of get rights for white women first and put theirs on the back burner until another time. And Freddie Kay was intentional not just in creating locations and spaces for us to have these stories, but to really going into neighborhoods like Dorchester, Mattapan, Roxbury, and making sure that folks in these communities knew the history, not only of the white women suffragists, but the Black and Brown women suffragists, and how critically important this diverse coalition was to ensuring that this passed. important this diverse coalition was to ensuring that this passed. And if it weren't for organizations established by Black women, this would not have happened. And so just wanted to raise up her intentionality. You don't often see it when talking about this movement. And so again, thank you to Freddie Kay. Thank you so much to Counselor Flynn and Counselor Janey. We share our relationship with Freddie Kay for many reasons, and so just really excited to be a partner in this with you guys. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Sorry, Madam President, you're... You're now. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President. I'm very pleased to partner with my colleagues, Counselor Flynn and Counselor Campbell. Certainly want to shout out Freddie Kay, as they both have already done, for her amazing work. You know, Counselor Flynn listed so many suffragists who have been part of this movement, and one I'd like to just highlight is Ida B. Wells, one of my personal heroes. So certainly wanted to just put her in the mix. It's important, as we celebrate this, and this is important to celebrate, you know, the 100th anniversary, the centennial anniversary of the Nineteenth Amendment. It comes at a very critical time in our nation's history as we continue to fight for voices to be heard, to be included. And so I'm reminded of how we opened our meeting, reflecting on Reverend C.T. Vivian and Congressman John Lewis and the work they've done, particularly Congressman Lewis, around voting rights. So much work continues. And we know that even when this passed 100 years ago, that wasn't for everyone. That did not mean everyone. That meant a certain group of women, and it would be decades later before Black women could freely vote. And even now, as we see what is happening throughout the South in our nation with voter ID laws, different tactics to suppress the vote, voting is still not something that everyone enjoys freely in this country, even though we boast around our democracy and being patriotic. You know, we still have to fight to make sure that everyone can truly exercise their right to vote. But I am grateful for the opportunity to celebrate the work that we've done thus far and the work that remains, whether that's early voting, and I mean early voting for young people, not early voting, I mean all of us. So early voting, so we don't just have to vote in November, but voting for our young people. I know I passed something last term on that. Voting for those who might be immigrants. There's more work to be done to ensure that everyone truly can participate in our democracy. And so I'm grateful for the work that has been done and the work that continues. And ask for my colleagues to join us as we seek suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Would any other counselors wish to speak on docket 0900? Would any counselors wish to add their name as co-sponsors? Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from Austin-Brighton. Madam Clerk, please add the At-Large Counsel from Dorchester. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Madam Clerk, please add the At-Large Counsel from Rosendale. Madam Clerk, please add the other At-Large Counsel from Dorchester. Madam Clerk, please add the Chair's name. Madam Clerk, please add the At-Large Counsel from South Boston. And Counselors Flynn, Campbell, and Counsel President Janey, I'll move for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0900. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is adopted.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President. So, I know the hour is late, but not to worry, we're halfway done. So just another four hours to go. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0901, please? Well, Madam Clerk, you're still on mute.
Thought she fainted.
Could you begin again? Yes.
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Docket number 0901, Counselor Flynn, offer the following resolution, recognizing National Purple Heart Day.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, may I add Counselor Flaherty as an original co-sponsor?
Yes, seeing and hearing, no objections. Counselor Flaherty has been added.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I filed this resolution asking my colleagues to support National Purple Heart Day, which is observed every year, August 7. This resolution recognizes military members, veterans, fallen heroes who have sacrificed for our nation. The Purple Heart is awarded to American service members who served in the U.S. military, who were injured, wounded, or died while a prisoner of war. And the Purple Heart is also known as the Badge of Military Merit. It's only awarded to service members wounded or killed in combat. We probably have 2 million service members throughout the country, many of them right here in Boston, in my neighborhood of South Boston, but there's a lot of African-American veterans that are recipients of the Purple Heart. And many of our mutual friends is Tony Molina in the South End. He's the Puerto Rican Veterans Memorial Committee, the first Puerto Rican recipient of the Purple Heart. In fact, there's more Puerto Ricans per capita, per ethnic group, recipients of the Purple Heart than any other ethnic background. National Purple Heart Day is now a day when Americans pause to remember in honor the men and women who have either, again, wounded or killed in the battlefield. My friend who's active in the Purple Heart Order of Massachusetts, Kurt Power, does tremendous work advocating for Purple Heart recipients at the federal level, state level, and city level, as does Senator John Kerry, who is also a Purple Heart recipient. So it's an important day, and I just wanted to ask my colleagues if they would, again, join me in supporting this important resolution. I appreciate everyone's consideration. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just appreciate the lead sponsor and including me, and he nailed it. Obviously, and I've said it before, that he does a great job representing our colleagues, this council, as a Navy veteran, and he's at all the events across the city, you know, whether it's in his district or not, making sure that he's advocating for veterans, for veteran services, for families of veterans, for widows and Gold Star families. So it's been great. So happy to join him here. The resolution speaks for itself. We got a lot of great Americans and great heroes throughout all of our neighborhoods who deserve this recognition and happy to move for suspension and adoption.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Show of physical hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Royo, Counselor Wu, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Braden, please also add the Chair. Counselors Flynn and Flaherty seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0901. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0901 has been adopted. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0902?
Docket 0902, Counselors Sabi George and Campbell offer the following resolution, recognizing July as BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Sabi George.
Thank you again, Madam President. As I mentioned during our last council meeting earlier this month, July is BIPOC Mental Health Month. With Counselor Campbell, our resolution not only declares it so in the city of Boston, but also highlights some of the incredible racial disparities when it comes to accessing mental health. People of color face systemic racism when trying to access mental health care or when trying to become mental health care providers themselves. I'd like to read some troubling statistics. 2.7 million Asian-American Pacific Islanders have had a mental and/or substance use disorder. Only 1 in 20 Latinos with a mental health disorder are able to receive services from a mental health specialist. Nearly 1/3 of Muslim Americans perceive discrimination in health care settings, and only 1 in 3 Black Americans who need mental health care receive it. Black Americans with mental health conditions are more likely to be incarcerated than people of other races. No matter a person's race or cultural background, everyone has to contend with their own mental health, and we should be able to do so free from discrimination, from incarceration, and from systemic barriers that make it unnecessarily hard to access the care we all need. I know that many of us on this body have struggled with our own mental well-being and have had family members who are actively struggling today. It is important that we, as a body, are considerate of each other, our family's struggles, and the struggles of so many Bostonians trying to get a handle on their mental well-being. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution. I also appreciate the support and partnership of Counselor Campbell again this year on this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Sabi George for the continued partnership on these incredible, on these important issues. And thank you for your work in consistently convening folks who are working to do away with those statistics that you just cited. Obviously, this continues to be a pressing issue, now exacerbated with respect to COVID-19 and the national trauma we're all, or collective trauma we're all feeling, particularly in communities of color that are disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. So we need to continue to raise up these issues around stigma related to getting help concerning your mental health, of course, doing away with incarcerating folks who are dealing with mental health issues. This is also an opportunity for us to talk about how we resource providers of color, those who are more culturally competent in dealing in certain communities or certain religions or anything else that might be deemed different, in order to really break through a wall to deliver effective mental health services and supports to those who seek it out. It takes incredible courage to admit that you're going through something and that you need help and support. And when residents come forward to seek that help and support, they should have not only access to good providers, but it should be easy. And I'll give you one example of folks in the community who are doing incredible things. I just recently spoke to a pediatrician who's at the South End Health Center, who's looking to go out on her own, and in her new model of delivering services to families and children, always having the sort of a wellness check at every single visit. What does it mean to have more wellness checks in different places and spaces, not just in the healthcare industry, because we know that all of us are experiencing something. If you are either an elected, obviously it's important for self-care, but in any role you're in, if you're watching TV, if you're on social media, and you are taking in any sort of imagery of pain and suffering, then that's traumatic. And so what does it mean to expand access, not just in traditional healthcare settings, and doing it as she is, ensuring that at every single visit or every interaction with a healthcare provider that you're going through a wellness check, but what does it mean to do it in other spaces or other industries at the same time? I think that's critically important. And just a reminder to those who watch us, including ourselves, self-care is critically important. Turn off social media every once in a while, turn off the TV, really get outside, get fresh air, really do something that pours back into your spirit, pours back into your soul. It's critically important during this time. So thank you, Counselor Sabi George, for your partnership here. I also want to thank Counselor Mahia. We obviously previously did work together, the three of us, on a mental health fund, which is critically important, too. So thank you, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mahia. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you so much to Counselor Sabi George and to Counselor Campbell. I would also just wanted to add, in regards to this resolution and being a part of it, is that when we're looking at the issues that a lot of our families are facing every single day, we're dodging bullets out here, we're dealing with the socially-emotional stressors of just poverty. I think that while this might be Mental Health Awareness Month, that when it comes to issues of poverty, this is something that we should be focusing on all year round, but looking forward to continuing the conversation and bringing that fund to life so that we can serve families in ways that these times require. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Counselor Flaherty, would you like to speak?
Yes, please add my name, Madam President. Thank you.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Flaherty, show of physical hands. Please also add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Royo, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Braden, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Wu. Please also add the Chair. Did I get everyone? Great. Counselor...
Madam Chair, can I also amend the record so I can add my name to 0901, please?
So we'll come right back. Let's finish this up, and then we'll do reconsideration for that. So we're currently on docket 0902. Counselors Sabi George and Counselor Campbell seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0902. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0902 has been adopted. The Chair recognizes Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, you wanted to offer a docket for reconsideration?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Docket 0901, I'd like to just add my name to that.
Yes, wonderful. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor Baker to docket 0901? That's it on this. We will move on to personnel orders. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please begin by reading the first docket, 0903?
Surely. Docket 0903, Counselor Janey for Counselor Braden.
Counselor Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0903. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0903 has been passed.
Docket 0904, Counselor Janey for Counselor Sabi George.
Counselor Sabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0904. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0904 has been passed.
Docket 0905, Counselor Janey for Counselor Mahia.
Counselor Mahia seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0905. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0905 has been passed.
Docket 0906, Counselor Janey for Counselor... Oops, we just did 0906, I'm sorry. Docket 0907, Counselor Janey for Counselor Mahia.
Did we do 0906? I thought we just did 0905.
Oh, no, you're right. Okay. No, you know what it is? I saw Counselor Sabi George, I'm sorry. 09, thank you.
Yes.
I think I felt no... Madam Chair. Docket 0906, Counselor Janey for Counselor Sabi George.
Counselor Sabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0906. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0906 has been passed.
Docket 0907, Counselor Janey for Counselor Mahia.
Counselor Mahia seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0907. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0907 has been passed.
Docket 0908, Counselor Janey for Counselor Wu.
Counselor Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0908. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0908 has been passed. We're now moving on to late files. I've been informed by the clerk that there are three late-file matters. So this is the point in the agenda where you have to check your emails for that. I want to make sure that we have, everyone has this. Just to be clear, all three of these dockets will show up in one committee report. So there's three late files because there's three dockets, but they're in one committee report. Everyone have their email? Okay, great. So in the absence of objection, these late-file matters will be added to the agenda. Not seeing any objections, great. So they're added. And I will recognize the Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. Does the clerk need to read these documents?
Yes, I may.
And we will vote on these separately.
Separately.
Flaherty for everyone. You're free to read each, read all of them, and you're free to speak to all of them, but we're going to take the votes separately.
Wonderful. Thank you. On-- Oops. On page 1621, in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 0710, sponsored by the mayor, message in order, authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $30,722.91 in the form of a grant for the federal FY16 Innovation in Community-Based Crime Reduction, formerly the Burn Criminal Justice, passed through the Boston Public Health Commission to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the purchase and installation of video cameras in the Bowdoin slash Geneva neighborhood, and also training police in crime prevention through environmental design. This was referred to committee on May 20th. There was a hearing on June 4th and June and July 23rd. Docket number 0752, on page 16 of 21, in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, sponsored by the mayor, message in order, authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $1,297,758 in the form of a grant for the FY20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund equipment, supplies, and training to safely carry out community policing efforts during the COVID-19 pandemic. Refer to committee on June 10th, 2020. Hearing was held on July 23rd, 2020. And the last matter, docket number 0831, is on page 17 of 21. It's in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, sponsored by the mayor. Message in order, authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $120,000 in the form of a grant for the Harrison Albany Block Public Benefits Fund, awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund the purchase and installation of cameras at O'Day Park, Blackstone Square, and Franklin Square in the South End, under cooperation agreements between MEPT slash LMP, GAMBRQ, I'm sorry, LLC, and the Boston Redevelopment Authority. This was filed on July 8th, 2020, and hearing was held on July 23rd, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before you begin, Counselor Campbell, Madam Clerk, could you, for the second late file matter, what was the docket number on that?
0752.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell, who chaired the Committee of Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Madam Clerk. I know this has been a long meeting, so I'll try to be as brief as I can. So, the committee held a hearing on Thursday, July 23rd, and we heard four dockets. There is one docket that I am intentionally leaving in committee, I believe it's docket 0408, which has to do with the BRIC. There were a lot of outstanding questions. We followed up and sent a list through central staff, and I want to thank Michelle Goldberg, who's been helping me navigate these communications with the administration. Many of those questions still have yet to be answered, so that docket will remain in committee. I also want to thank all of my colleagues for not only participating in the hearing with respect to all of these dockets, but also sending follow-up questions on the BRIC. I will make sure that we get responses to that, and I'm still also pushing for the BRIC to get creative and hopefully have a meeting with some of the advocates, which I think will go a long way in building trust and getting at more specifics on those questions versus sort of the middle, the chair being the middle person between, in those conversations. Today, I am recommending passage of three dockets. The first is docket 0710, and this has to do with the funding, funding in the amount of, just want to make sure I have these dockets right, $30,722.91. This was the second hearing that we had with respect to this docket. The original hearing was on June 10th, and then, of course, we had a follow-up hearing, actually was on June 4th, and we had a follow-up hearing on July 23rd. And so, this funds the purchase and installation of cameras in the Bowdoin and Geneva neighborhood, as well as training for crime prevention through environmental design. The grant comes to the Police Department through actually a subcontract with the Health Commission. So, this is jointly administered. This grant is for the purpose of, this grant was specifically for the purpose of doing work in the Bowdoin and Geneva area. It included community organizing and planning with residents in that area, as well as some of the civic associations in that neighborhood. The current grant is a result of a planning process that was actually staffed by the Health Commission. It included 30 community-based organizations, community members, and police over a period of a year and a half. The Strategic Planning Group's proposal, which required approval by the U.S. Department of Justice in advance of funding, included a list of positive youth programming, community policing efforts, this crime prevention through environmental design, which means shifting and changing the landscape and community, or structures in such a way that you actually reduce violence, and it included a continuum of prevention and intervention programming. The grant was actually held up for several years during a reevaluation period by the current federal administration, and the recent result, the recent approval of the grant, though it was actually reduced, included this $30,000 subcontract through the Health Commission and ultimately administered by the Police Department. And as requested as part of the initial proposal, the $30,000 was to include cameras, which is one small piece, as well as training in this new environmental design model, which is used, which uses changes in physical space to discourage crime. I know, obviously, there was a lot of conversations on the camera piece of this docket. It includes more than that, and because of the robust community process here, we actually heard from, and Aiden says hello, we actually heard from folks in the community, some of whom supported this, some did not, but understood that because it was a lengthy process, maybe not everyone agreed, that they weren't going to stand in the way of passage of this. With respect to the second docket, this is docket 0752, this funds equipment, supplies, training to safely carry out community policing efforts during COVID-19. We obviously heard from a long list of departments within the Police Department as to the monies they were received from this grant, and what they would do with those. It was an extensive hearing. The grant comes to the Police Department through the FY20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding. It was awarded by the Department of Justice. It's supplemental to the annual formula grants. The funds will be dispersed among various units to make pandemic-related public health adjustments to continue daily business in ways that keep officers and families, and of course, the public safe. Various units would receive funding, including the Academy, to enable remote learning, the Bureau of Administration and Technology, which is for digital signage, to allow for information sharing and social distancing, as well as technology for digital arrangements, street outreach, so to conduct community outreach events safely, facilitate inter-agency information sharing. So, there was a long hearing with respect to this, and each department showed up, and I wanted to thank the administration for having every department head show up to specifically present on their piece of this docket. And then, lastly, docket 0831, funds the purchase and installation of cameras in O'Day Park, Blackstone Square, Franklin Square in the South End. The funding comes from the Harrison Albany Block Public Benefits Fund, which, of course, includes no public dollars as a result of an agreement between a developer and the Redevelopment Authority, or the BPDA. The agreement was developed in conjunction with abutting residents and neighborhood associations representing that area. It actually was almost a five-year process involving numerous and significant community meetings, including with district councilors for that area. There were multiple meetings in the community over several years regarding how they want to use this funding, what agreements they wanted to work out with developers with respect to certain projects in that area. This was one of the agreements based on some incidents that took place. Again, community process in that area led by district councilors, and I think maybe some at-large councilors with respect to this docket. Specifically, on the two dockets that have to deal with cameras, obviously, there was extensive conversation around surveillance. That will continue, but I thought it was a mistake to override community process that took place over the course of years, and in some instances, actually, before I even joined the council. And based on feedback from those folks who live in that district, some were in favor, some not, majority were in favor. I recommend passage of those two dockets, as well as the coronavirus-related docket. The BRIC docket will stay in committee. I do think there's obviously advocacy here, which I think is critically important, and I've been encouraging advocates to go out now in two districts to talk about other ways to solve violence, to prevent it, to intervene, but recommending passage of these dockets, and we'll continue the conversation with respect to the fourth docket dealing with the BRIC. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for allowing me to go a little bit long.
Thank you.
Oh, and I should say, if the district councilors want to specifically speak to the dockets that deal with their districts, I'm happy, defer to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So, we're going to take each docket and vote on them separately. Madam Clerk, do you need to say anything else, or should I just jump right in?
I think we're ready to--
Excellent.
Forward.
Counselor Campbell, suspension of the rules and passage of late file matter, which is docket 0710. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the late file matter, which is docket 0710, has been passed. We will now move on to the next one. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the second late file matter, which is docket 0752. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Doubt the vote.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll. This is for docket 0752. The late file matter, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Arroyo.
Aye.
I couldn't hear him, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards? Counselor Edwards?
Counselor Edwards is not on, she had to step aside, thank you.
Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mahia?
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes.
Thank you.
Madam President, docket number 0752, received 12 votes in the affirmative, 0 votes in the negative.
Thank you so much. So, that late file matter has been passed, docket 0752. The last one is for docket 0831. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. The ayes have it.
Doubt the vote.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards? Counselor Asabi George? I can see her, but-- Counselor Asabi George?
Yes, please, thank you. Sorry about that.
Nope, no problem. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mahia?
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. So, docket number 0831, passed with 12 votes in the affirmative, 0 votes in the negative.
Thank you so much. Docket 0831 has been passed. We'll move on to the green sheets. Anyone looking to extend our meeting? No, great. So, we will move on to announcements. Show of blue hands, please, for announcements, blue hands, blue Zoom hands. The Chair recognizes Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, just wanted to give colleagues a quick update about five, I believe it's five, dockets that are in committee. These are various appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and there have been several hearings related to the ZBA through Counselor Edwards' Home Rule Petition, which we passed earlier today, in which this has come up. The Zoning Board of Appeals is down to, there are several members short, and so they're really down to quorum, especially with COVID happening and a pause in city business. There is a growing backlog of cases that the board members have to address, and because they're not at full capacity, if some or a number of members can't make it to any particular meeting, that just adds to the backlog. So, the appointments are in committee and have not been acted on because, as committee chair, I've been waiting for more resolution and answers to restore trust as it relates to the situation that the Zoning Board of Appeals was implicated in last year around the federal corruption charge in the bribery case. I have sent a letter to the mayor in this capacity, asking for some of that information. Shortly before today's city council meeting, I received a response back from Commissioner Dion Irish. So, if you watch your inbox, because I will forward both of those communications to councilors, so you have all of that background. I have also asked for the resumes of sitting board members, as well as the proposed nominees, just so everyone has a sense of who is being considered for this. My honest assessment is that the letter, while I very much appreciate and respect Commissioner Irish's leadership and response, does not address the specific questions that were asked, does not do enough to restore trust, and so, would like to convene my colleagues at some point, maybe it's a meeting of the committee, or maybe it's in some other fashion, to think about how we might marry what role the council has in approving nominations to the board with the concepts and the principles that are behind the Home Rule Petition that Counselor Edwards had offered. I think there's an opportunity that would restore trust while moving us in the direction that we have outlined earlier in this meeting. So, just, please keep your eye out, and we'll send that email. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Counsel Wu. The Chair recognizes Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I have both an invitation and then some musings. I'll start with the invitation. Next Thursday, August 6th, the Committee on Government Operations, of course, Counselor Edwards's committee is holding a working session following up to a docket that I introduced back in April on early voting, or excuse me, voting by mail, as well as election preparedness. We introduced this back in April of this year, April 13th. We had a hearing in May. In that time, there's been tremendous action by the state. Many of us have received our application for vote by mail, just so all of you know, as I'm sure that you do, and perhaps people watching know, for this year's primary and general election on votes September 1st and November 8th. So, the ability to vote by mail, no-excuse absentee voting, which has never happened in this Commonwealth before, at least in recent history certainly, will be early voting in certain locations, and of course, Election Day voting. Now, one of the reasons, while we're very gratified that a lot of our recommendations from that hearing back in May have come to fruition, there's still concern, we want to make sure that the incredibly talented and dedicated men and women of the Boston Elections Department have the resources and support that they need. Two things of note, one is, I know a number, not a significant number, but a handful of voting locations are going to have to change, so it's incumbent upon all of us to get that get that word out to our constituents. And the second thing is that there will be, there has been a paucity of election workers volunteering to sign up for these shifts. So one way to address that, we've actually increased the pay, and it's something that we can certainly use our networks to get the word out. So I encourage you all to participate, or have staff participate in our hearing, in our working session next Thursday at 2:00 p.m., obviously by Zoom, or via Zoom. And then the music, I just wanted to say that, while Counsel Flaherty certainly has more years than I do total serving on this body, I will not cede my title of being the longest-serving continuous member of this body. And these summer sessions, I think it's not a secret, and the clerk can certainly attest as well, the summer sessions are typically briefer than today's plus. And I just wanted to sort of note how proud I am of this body. There is no question what an exceptionally hard time this is in our country right now for a whole host of reasons. And it's a hard, particularly hard time to be serving in elective office, to be a public servant, and there's criticism that it is good for us, there's criticism that's less good for us, but all in all, it's important. It's a challenging job, but obviously, I know that we all feel the incredible passion for the importance of the job and doing right by our constituents in our city. And so the fact that we're now on four and a half hours, and all of us, all of us have put forth some really thoughtful and important legislation and initiatives and ideas as it relates to public safety, public education, public health, consumer protection, housing, the list just goes on and on, transportation, I'm just very proud of each and every one of you, and I'm exceptionally proud to be a member of this council. So I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you for a very jam-packed and important council meeting.
Thank you for that. Any other announcements? Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, could I add my name to docket zero eight eight six regarding exam schools?
Yes. Madam Clerk? Seeing no objections, we'll add your name. I just want to make sure that we get the docket for you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam.
Zero eight eight six, Counsel Flynn has just added his name.
Excellent. Any other announcements? Show of blue hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I was having computer issues. I want to say thank you to Carrie for helping me during this period, so thank you, Carrie.
Yes, we all have to thank you, Carrie. So thank you for keeping the trains moving. We had a little difficulty with one of our colleagues being booted off, and we had to start over, so thank you, thank you all. And I echo the remarks from Counsel O'Malley about how proud I am to serve on this body and work with all of you. The work is really important, and that's why I wanted to ground us in the beginning with paying tribute to those who we will obviously honor as we close out our meeting, but the work is very much for me, connected to that struggle of the sixties and obviously our movement now. So thank you for pointing that out. Another announcement, Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia? You're on mute? Just want to unmute yourself?
Sure, of course I do. I shouldn't, my daughter had to let me know I was on mute. Say hi to Elise. So just really quick, I just wanted to thank the whole entire council for their patience today when I got kicked off the Zoom Island. So thank you, and it's, I've missed you all these last two weeks, so I'm really happy that we made up for that loss of time in this eight-hour session today, but like, I'd like to just echo Counsel O'Malley's sentiments in terms of the important work we're all doing for our constituents, and really proud to be a member in this time. I'm so incredibly humbled that I am here, serving, even though I only won by one vote, I, every day, I am reminded of like how lucky I am to be a part of this council and during these times, so just really incredibly grateful for everyone and their partnership and all that I have learned along the way. And I also wanted to say, I didn't get to say anything for the internet.
How ironic, the internet hearing order booted you off.
I thought the same thought. Me to join him as a co-sponsor, and looking forward to that hearing, and thank you, Council President, President Council. I'm going to get it right one of these days, Janey, for steering us in this direction and all that you do to keep us grounded and together.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other announcements, want to quickly remind anyone who may still be watching that yesterday was the day of action for our census. The response rate in Boston, the last time I checked, was really low. We were just over half getting all the households responded. So there's a lot more work to do in terms of making sure that residents all throughout our city, every single person is counted. This is connected to important resources from the federal government, so if you're watching, please fill out the census, please have your friends and family fill out their census, but we've got to do better. And we know we're just over fifty-two percent for the city and communities of color, the response rate is even lower. So I just wanted to say that. And finally, as, just before we move on to tributes, just as it was fitting to open the meeting with civil rights legends, I want to close in the same way. I want to shine a light on a civil rights activist who is an unsung hero, who just passed away, Mimi Jones from Roxbury. Many of you probably know her. Her activism began when she was just a teenager, growing up in the South. She participated in a number of demonstrations. She taught residents how to read and write so that they could register and vote. At sixteen years old, she participated in the March on Washington. At seventeen years old, she organized a swim-in in an attempt to integrate a Florida pool, and in response, the motel owner, who was a white man, poured acid in the pool where the children were swimming. Mimi was arrested several times, continuing her activism in the movement, even when she moved to Boston for college so many years ago. She settled here as a college student and was beloved by many, not just in Roxbury, but across our city. So I wanted to lift her up today as an unsung hero, as a civil rights legend, alongside of C.T. Vivian and Congressman John Lewis. And so when we close out today's meeting, we will close out the meeting in her honor as well. So now we'll move on to memorials. We will adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For counselors Baker, Flynn, and Flaherty, Elizabeth Betty Hart. For counselors Flynn and Flaherty, Elaine Flaherty, John Jack Woods, What Up Goon, William Harahan, Evelyn Ann Secconi, Wanda Stack, Michael Briziden, and Marie Guerin. For Counselor Flynn, James McCarthy. For Counselor Wu, Charles Colburn. For the Chair, Muse Mohammed. And on behalf of the entire council, civil rights legends, the Reverend C.T. Vivian, Congressman John Lewis, and Roxbury's own Mimi Jones. A moment of silence. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in the memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, August nineteenth, so there's a little break again, Wednesday, August nineteenth, at twelve noon. For the safety of the general public and all those involved, this meeting will be held virtually and posted online. Viewers can watch the council meeting live by going on YouTube or by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.